The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin with public comment. Are there any public comments from the Board?
No.
No.
I do, Mr. Chair. I wanted to recognize the passing of somebody from our community. In fact, I just came back from the calling hours for John Latanzi, who has been in this town since 1982, loving father and husband, and certainly an integral part of the community. He was involved in many different roles over the years, including Lunenburg Personnel Board, the Conservation Commission, and the Historical Society, as well as being an active member in St. Boniface and Lady of the Lake churches. I had the pleasure of knowing John and being friend with him, and I know two of his five children fairly well, who were also prominent members of the community, Jim Latanzi of Hollis Hill Farm, and Gene Proctor, who was involved, of course, with Proctor Landscaping and Whale and Marsh, et cetera, both families themselves, integral parts of our community. So I just wanted to recognize his passing. I was honored to be able to call him my friend, and he will certainly be missed.
He said, what about setback? I said, what are you talking about setback? He said, well, do you have a plot plan? I said, no, these are plans that go. He asked the same question. And I, well, I asked the same question as you. And then he was just like, well, you have to. So he kind of guided me. So we got the mission setback, the plot line, all that up to code, like everything.
I'm, I'm, I'm familiar, I'm familiar with all that. I guess my question is not for you, it's for the board.
The board doesn't have.
Because, because, you know, if we, first of all, my understanding is that nowadays licenses, anything we approve would include an outdoor license.
If, if it's described.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
So extending it, I can't see a scenario where a board would say to some individual restaurant, no, we're not going to approve this. So you're not going to worry about your investment. But I want to be able to say, I'll approve it as long as it fits the guidelines from the planning board and we don't have what outdoor seating requirements for the planning board are. So I'm taking a big guess that that's what's going to happen. It's not a guess on you.
Yeah.
It's a guess on our own policies.
Yeah, you only have a few in town that have outdoor seating currently.
So Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I, I understand some of the confusion, Mr. Alonso. You know, during the pandemic, um, you know, with what was done on the state level, they basically gave the alcohol appointing authority, the approve, the ability to approve outdoor seating without it having to go through the planning process.
Right.
Through the planning board. Um, in, in that case, I think we were largely looking at existing businesses. No one was expanding their actual footprint. They were using, um, you know, parking lots and, and other areas that, you know, people weren't really creating spaces, so to speak. In this case, this is an actual modification because of the egress that's being affected here. So this is a building modification. It's a site modification that is permanent, that's not temporary, and that's not going to come down. So it does naturally trigger a building process. So I think our role as per the policy when it comes to premises, we're supposed to be looking, and, and I think we can go to it, but we're looking to make sure that there's an adequate way to get into it, an adequate way to get out. So it's kind of access control. Uh, I believe that's what our policy says, access control. You know, how are they going to make sure that people coming in this area is 21? And she's already answered that they're coming in through the restaurant, that there's only one way into the area, and then you can get out of it by coming through the front door. So I think our role here is more limited. Are there reasonable controls in this patio area that we look for in the inside of the building? Are they kind of replicated here? And I think that that's really the scope. But, you know, why we are the first step is because the, um, the applicant is going to incur, in this case, engineering costs and other costs that would be worth, would not be worthwhile if in the first instance, we said no. Uh, and that would stop the applicant or try to persuade us, but it would save the applicant money.
Right.
So I think we're just looking for compliance with the physical premise requirements. Uh, that's in our policy.
And I, I understand why we're first. I have no confusion.
Yeah. But I think the planning board will look at the planning board stuff. We're just looking at access control.
But we should have just a list of things, and it should be under the planning board to review all those, not the board of select. And that's all I, I've said this in the past, I said it at the sixth, when this came up that, okay, the COVID rules of just approving things are going to expire, you need an outdoor license, an outdoor alcohol license policy. I said it should go to the planning board.
Right, have a policy in place.
And I say it now because that's where it should be. And we should say, yeah, okay, this is fine with us as long as it adheres to the alcohol outdoor alcohol policy of the planning board. And I think we should work on it. That's all I'm saying.
Understood. Thank you for all that. All right. I'll just say I fully support your application. I look forward to being built when we get there and visiting it myself when it is completed.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions tonight? All right.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you very much for your time, much appreciate it.
Have a good one.
Have an amazing night.
Oh, do you want these back?
They're good plants.
Suitable for framing.
All right, thank you so much. Have a good night. All right, up next, we have health insurance renewal with Susan Shalou of Cook &amp; Company. And since Jen invited Susan in, uh, I am going to pass it off to her to introduce Sue.
Sure, so thank you. So, um, you know, this insurance renewal, uh, was a little bit of a sticker shock for some people and, um, largely in the community as well, um, just hearing how large the renewal was going to be this year and that that is potentially going to be sustained. When Sue came in and presented at P E C last week, I thought that it's just a short little kind of state of affairs. I thought that it would be beneficial for the community at large to hear.
Okay, thank you. Well, Sue, I'll pass it off to you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, thanks for having me. Um, just to introduce myself, I'm Sue Shalou from Cook &amp; Company. We do health plan consulting specifically for Massachusetts municipalities. We currently work with over 50 cities and towns in the state. I've been doing this for 38 years, and this is probably one of the tougher renewal seasons that I've had to experience. We're experiencing right now what I'm calling the perfect storm of so many different factors coming together, which is resulting in significant increases in healthcare. Um, the town of Lunenburg gets their health insurance through MIA, which is the insurance arm of the Mass Municipal Association. And MIA is a joint trust that's comprised of over 150 cities and towns within the state. I would say historically, MIA's increases have been somewhere in the single digits. This year has been extraordinary. Um, the rate range for all of the MIA communities is between 10% and 20%, with the average just under 15. And the town of Lunenburg is, did receive their rate increase, which is just slightly under 15%. Just to put it in perspective, um, as I said at the beginning, we're seeing these cost increases across the board, across the state. It's not just Lunenburg, and it's not just MIA. The Group Insurance Commission, which is the state health insurance plan for state workers and municipalities, can also join the G I C. Um, they historically have tried to keep their increases at what has been deemed like a benchmark or a target by the state. There were many, many years where they reached that, which was again in the low single digits. This year, for their active plans, the average increase is 12.7%. And the individual plans, because the G I C offers eight different options, range anywhere from 10 to 17%. Some of the other joint purchase groups in the state have actually disbanded or are talking about disbanding. And then others in the western part of the state have seen significant increases as well. So the question is, why are we experiencing this? Um, as I said, it's the perfect storm right now of a lot of different factors coming into play. Some of those factors are as follows. In the municipal world, there are very few carriers that will even write municipal business because it's an aging population, an older age group, which means it's a higher risk group. The commercial carriers, such as the Cignas and the Aetnas, they don't want to write municipal business. There's been a consolidation of carriers. Harvard Pilgrim has absorbed Tufts Healthcare. Fallon Community Health Plan has left the market except for Medicare and Medicaid plans, but they've left the commercial market. So in the municipal world, the players really are Blue Cross Blue Shield, Harvard Pilgrim, and Mass General Brigham. What's happening is those carriers are having a more difficult time negotiating contracts and fees, reimbursement fees, um, with the providers for many different reasons. The providers are seeing increased costs, technology costs, staffing costs, where they're having to pay more to attract employees. They're having to pay, in many cases, for traveling nurses, which are significantly more expensive than having nurses on staff. They are, as I said, seeing like increases in technology. They're also getting lower reimbursements on public health plans such as Medicare and Medicaid, so they have to make up for it on the other side, which are the commercial rates. So it's getting harder and harder for the carriers to keep providers in the network, but at the same time, offer them a reimbursement that isn't going to bankrupt the carrier's clients, but it's also going to provide enough reimbursement so that the providers will remain part of the network, giving your employees more choice. The other factor is the cost of prescription drugs. There are a lot of specialty medications that are coming on the market. We're really fortunate to have them, but they're very, very expensive. Um, I think in general, in Massachusetts, we're very fortunate for the healthcare that we do have with all of the teaching hospitals. Um, again, we have the access to phenomenal care, but we pay for it. The same is true with prescription drugs. We're fortunate that they're continually coming out with, um, drugs to treat chronic illnesses, but again, they're expensive. Anybody who has seen the news knows that the hot topic these days are the GLP-1 drugs, which are the diabetes management drugs that are being used for weight loss. They're very expensive drugs. Yes, we are so fortunate again to have them, especially if they can keep people healthy, but they're very expensive. Right now, we're making an investment by having, by your employees having the option of those drugs, whereas the savings or the return on that investment will be down the road when we see how the utilization of these medications affects the health of the employees. Um, Blue Cross has actually seen, I was in a meeting just this afternoon, Blue Cross has seen the utilization of those drugs for weight loss triple from last year to this year, and they expect it to at least double going into next year. So unfortunately, we're in a tough period right now. I just want to stress that we're not expecting that this year is a one-off and that cost will come down next year. All indications are that we have to be prepared to continue to see this escalation over the next several years, um, which is not great news, but unfortunately, we believe it's a reality.
All right, thank you, Sue, for some of that background information and the bad news ultimately. So I'll link it up to any questions from the board. Renee, do you have any questions?
So I think I heard you say about 150 cities and towns are in, using MIA, MIA. So that's about half.
Yeah, and it's actually higher than that, but yes.
So what are the other almost using?
So other, yeah. And I would say that it tends to be cities or towns that are on the smaller side that can't, can't stand alone, um, can't have plans just on their own. So some of the larger cities and towns are not part of the joint purchase group. Some of them are fully insured directly with a carrier. Others, which tend to be the larger ones, are self-insured, where they assume the risk as opposed to the carrier assuming the risk. There are regional joint purchase groups around the state that a lot of the towns in particular participate in. And then I think there's about 45 municipal entities that are actually in the Group Insurance Commission. So I would say it's a combination of various joint purchase groups, or for those communities who are large enough to stand on their own, they do so.
Okay, and I think I heard you say that they're also experiencing the same double-digit types of increase.
For the most part, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Tom?
I don't have any questions. I, I mean, I would ask, but I don't think, I don't think our guest is able to answer. Like, so what is the, what is the breaking point of this? I mean, if we're paying family plans that are $34,000, $35,000 a year, and we're looking at 15% increases next year or somewhere in that range, everybody's got to ask, so what is the breaking point of all this? Like, it's obviously unsustainable.
I, I would agree with you that it's unsustainable. Um, unfortunately, there are no magic solutions. You can make plan design changes, which would bring your rates down, but then it is a cost shifting, um, when you increase co-pays and deductibles. Sometimes benefit modifications can affect behavior, and so you can sometimes see behavior change. Just as an example, if you have tiering of providers, for example, and going to Mass General is going to be, um, a much higher co-pay than going to a local community hospital, you may see some behavior changes there. We're constantly on the lookout for different point solutions to address things like diabetes. Um, MIA offers a program through a company called Epicus Health Solutions that incentivizes people who have diabetes to get their care. And if they do so, in exchange for that, they, um, their co-pays are waived on their prescription drugs. So I, I think things are going to evolve over the years, um, upcoming years, but unfortunately, there's no, like I just said, there's no magic solution.
Can I have one follow-up for you? I just noticed the, um, the deductible, we're looking at three plans here, Blue Care, Network Blue, and, uh, different flavors of Network Blue, I guess. It's a $250 deductible?
Yes.
Is that the same for individual and family?
No, there, it's capped at $750 per family.
That seems like, I mean, based on my own plan, that's a very low deductible.
Yeah, so the municipal world is very different than the private sector. Um, the municipal, the municipal world uses the G I C sort of as a benchmark plan. They have a $500 deductible that's capped at $1,000 per family. With the exception of offering a high deductible health plan as an option, most municipalities don't have deductibles that are higher than that, which again, I know is drastically different than in the private sector. There are statutes and, you know, collective bargaining issues and all of that within the municipal world, which means that the town can't just make decisions and implement
I have a question to the town manager. We are pursuing, potentially reviewing a, um, high deductible plan next year. This is a one-year renewal that we're looking at this year?
One-year renewal.
Yeah, okay. I don't have any questions for you, Sue, um, other than, you know, I, I used to be on the P E C and working with you, so I know, you know, it's always been a pleasure, and I appreciate your presentation. I wish it was better news, but I know it's not your fault that we are seeing this information.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Uh, as we look at these rates today, what is the, um, I thought it was 70% municipal, 30% employee, but I just wanted to confirm, what is the, what percentage of this are the employees expected to pay?
I think it is 70/30, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Seventy, uh, I want to say.
I think it's, I think it's 75/25.
25, 75/25.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, it wasn't changed, I thought it was changed to 70/30, but, okay.
All right.
It was a, it was.
Well, I know it was reduced from, yeah, initially, yeah.
And, and then my next, my next question is, um, you know, in, in the case, many people just have, um, you know, one person, you know, plus spouse. Um, and is, can you just explain, um, how we landed with individual family and no individual plus one?
Yes, that is the question of the day. I think in my 38 years, that's the most asked question. Um, so basically, your plan is going to cost the same regardless of how you dip it up. So again, in the municipal world, it's very uncommon to offer a three-tier rate, which typically would be individual, individual plus one, and family. I know that that's very common in the private sector, but because municipalities cover people forever, um, it's not common. What that does is, if you, let's say that the cost of your plan is a million dollars. It doesn't matter if you charge just individual family or you have a three-tier structure, the cost of that is still going to be a million dollars because the cost of your plan is based on your claims, and the claims don't change. So if you cull out the two-person families out of that family rate and charge them a lower rate, it significantly bumps up the family rate. The two-person families tend to be older couples whose children are grown and off the plan. Because they're an older, um, age group, it, they are higher risk, they most likely have more claims. So it doesn't necessarily make sense to charge them less money when they've already raised their family and their kids are now off the plan. In addition, and that's more of an actuarial argument, in addition to that, my personal, um, thought is that it also opens up a can of worms because you could have a single parent with two children working next to a two-parent family with five children, and then they're wondering why their family of three is, is paying the same rate as a family of seven. But again, just in summary, it is, I, I really don't know any municipalities that do that for the initial reasons that I presented.
All right, thank you.
I don't have any questions for you, Sue, but thank you for coming in. And Jen, I just wanted to ask, there's anything else that you'd like to say?
No, um, I think that this kind of paints a picture of where we are, and I think it, it also kind of charts out that we have some work to do in this area over the course of next year alongside the P E C.
Mr. Chair, I, I'll close by saying that, I mean, this is outside of the scope of, uh, Sue and outside the scope of this board, but, you know, to see 15% increases, $35,000 plans, to get reduced life expectancy and near the lower end of the industrialized world, you know, is a wake-up call, hopefully somewhere, I don't know how loud the bell has to ring, but again, the sustainability of this comes from that, that algebra, that, that construct just doesn't work.
Yeah, well, thank you so much, Sue, for coming in and giving us all this information. I appreciate all that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good night, Sue.
Thank you.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
All right, up next, Marshall Park Project Presentation with Anita Schypers, Chair of the Parks Commission.
I have to say, as a retired town manager, I found that conversation just bringing me And I'm glad I'm not the one involved in it. Anyways, I'm Anita Schypers. I'm the chairman of the Parks Commission, and, um, I appreciate a chance to come before you again tonight, um, to basically do a, a repeat of the public information sessions that we've been doing, um, on, on other dates and times. Get the information out about what we're proposing for Marshall Park at town meeting. Um, so if we could have the slides, are they all set?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
There's just a little delay on that.
Oh, okay, good to know.
That's the public access feed, that's why, so.
Okay, all right, thanks. So, um, basically, the things I'd like to go over this evening are, why are we choosing Marshall Park for the improvements? We've been asked that question. Why Marshall Park versus some of the other parks that we have in town? So we'll go through that. Um, what are we looking to get from this proposed project? What are the deliverables that will be, that we would be seeing if this project moves ahead? Very important is the proposed project, the scope and the cost associated with that scope, and then how do we pay for it? And then, um, number four, dotting our i's and crossing our t's. This is just, um, going over the various different grants that we would be eligible to apply for, again, for this project. Um, and we've been asked quite a bit, um, by members of the, um, public, what are we thinking about maintenance costs? Ongoing maintenance costs are something that people really want to know about, and rightly so. It's, you know, it is part of a project that you take on. And, um, so if we could have the next slide, please? Okay, so why Marshall Park? The current open space and recreation plan, um, had a look at all recreational, um, assets that the town has. And, um, in looking at that, they determined that Marshall Park definitely does not meet the current needs of our residents. That open space plan had several goals and objectives, but the key goal, goal number one, was to enhance and promote existing open space and recreation areas in the town. And the associated objective is to do a master plan that would do a restorment and enhancement of key recreation resources that we have. And specific language in that open space plan said, "Marshall Park, this resource was once the centerpiece of Lunenburg's recreation and civic activities. Today, it mostly serves as baseball and softball fields for a limited portion of the year, and serves a small segment of the town's population. Thoughtful and coordinated revitalization of this unique resource could meet many identified town needs. A master plan should be developed to guide the revitalization of Marshall Park to maximize its use." So that is why the Parks Commission chose to move ahead, to look at Marshall Park for improvements. In putting together the requested master plan, a vision was created in doing that. And that vision was to build a park that meets today's needs, inspires tomorrow's possibilities, and honors the rich history of our town. To create a shared outdoor space connected with nature, history, and our town identity, where Lunenburg residents of all ages and abilities come together for fun, fitness, and community. And lastly, to create a community space that delivers the most value for the most residents that would support our schools and youth athletics while fostering friendships, new connections, good health, and good times. So in looking at the existing conditions of Marshall Park, for those who haven't been to the park recently, um, there is a lot that needs to be done. Unfortunately, maintenance has not been done over the years, um, as we've seen in other assets that the town owns. But some key aspects and existing conditions are that there currently are no restroom facilities at Marshall Park, and there are many games, many leagues, community groups, uh, that use the ball fields there, and we have no restroom facilities. We have older structures needing renovation or demolition, um, because of their age and the condition. You know, in the photographs, you see, um, one of the storage buildings that's there, and you also see that old playground, which I believe is 25-plus years old, which is rusting and really is becoming unsafe to use. Um, another big aspect of existing conditions is the lack of parking. Um, there is some parking off of Mass Ave, but it's a, basically a dirt lot that does not have delineated spaces, really that can only hold 35 to 40 cars, um, and has no ATA-compliant handicap parking there. And Chestnut Street has a limited pull-off area next to the 90-foot Diamond, um, but with the number of people that attend the games at the ball fields, um, there is additional parking up and down Chestnut Street, which causes road congestion and causes concern from the public safety community in terms of getting necessary access to the park, or even at times to get, um, emergency vehicles down Chestnut Street. Another, another existing condition is unfortunately the drainage or lack thereof on the Baseball Diamond. The water table for the 90-foot Diamond is very high, and I'm sure many of you know that when we've had any rain, um, that field is very wet to play on, and to the degree that it even, you know, if we've had significant rain, especially in the springtime, when the school team is using, uh, the field the most, um, we've had to reschedule games or practices because the field is just not able to be used because it's, um, of the level of water in the field. Um, no major renovations have been done by the town in over 25 years. Um, the new items that you see on the park, Powell Field, which is the little league field, um, on the backside, um, was built by donations and volunteer labor, as were the, um, the dugouts that are on the 90-foot Diamond and the softball fields. Next, please. Next, please. So what are we going to be getting from this project? Next few slides, we'll go over the specific benefits. Uh, we'll talk about the master plan overview versus the scope of work that we're proposing for this project. We'll look at the design, what's included, and the phasing of the project, and then just a, a brief project background. So the specific benefits associated with this, our, um, first one is to strengthen our schools. Renovation, um, would provide upgraded baseball and softball fields with improved facilities for the middle and high school students. Um, we would have fields that are, um, meet all necessary regulations. We would have restroom facilities. We would have, um, pavilions for protection and weather. And we would have parking necessary for all of the, um, attendees and for the public that comes to view the games. We'd be supporting our youth sports with improved facilities for the youth ball league, offering a better environment for the young athletes to play and grow. Now, the Powell Field, Little League Field, is not part of the project that we'll be moving ahead with or if, if we, um, receive the necessary votes. Um, but still, they will be benefiting from the restroom facilities that we, we built, the concession stand, and the parking that will be established. This project would be, um, of maximum financial impact for the town. It would create a multi-generational, multi-use space with just one investment benefiting all ages, all abilities, and a variety of different activities that we currently do not have. It would support senior health. We have safe walking paths that are smooth and for low-impact exercise. We have, um, accessible parking and accessible restrooms. It would also provide a place for young families with the playground and the pavilion, bathroom facilities, et cetera. Um, it would be an inclusive place featuring universally accessible playground and picnic areas, fostering outdoor fun and community connection. And then lastly, community itself, building community, space for community activities and pickleball, basketball, excuse me, basketball and off-street walking. So this slide shows the master plan that was developed as an outcome of the Open Space and Recreation Plan. That original master plan called for a design that really incorporated the entire park. It called for improved parking on Chestnut Street, improved Mass Ave parking off of Mass Ave with a designated pedestrian access entrance, a basketball court, three pickleball courts, the pavilion area for concessions and shelter, and new restroom facilities, the accessible playground, the new 90-foot Diamond, and a new softball field, walking paths, dog park, connection of the main park area to Marshall Pond via a four-foot wide pathway that would lead to an overlook area on the southwest side of the pond. And there would also be Marshall Pond parking area with a picnic area and pond overlook. That was all what was included in the master plan design. What we're proposing at Town Meeting is different. Uh, we're looking at exist, at only the existing developed areas of Marshall Park for this proposed project. The reason for that is that when we looked at the cost estimate for the full master plan design, the cost was just exorbitant and we knew that it was, um, at a level that just not, could not be supported by the town. Uh, so we, you know, went back to the drawing board, so to speak, and, um, looked to see what we could do that would be, still, um, provide a lot of new amenities for the town, meet the objectives of the Open Space and Recreation Plan, and be what we felt would be a, um, something that the town could afford, could put their support behind. So what this means is that the dog park, the wetland trails, and the other improvements previously included in that full master plan are not included in this design scope that we're putting forward. However, the master plan is put together in such a way that, um, we still have the ability to design improvements to those areas later on when the town wishes to take The, um, design team that we're working with, uh, we have Ray Dunitz from RDLA. Um, he is our principal landscape designer for the project. And as you've heard us all, many of us, talk about before, municipalities are required for a project of this size to, to hire a project manager, an owner's project manager. And we have hired, um, Skanska. We have, Thomas Doolittle is our project manager for this project. So this next slide shows the layout of the original master plan next to our proposed funding scope. And you can see on the original master planner, hopefully people can see, um, that on the master plan, the red lines along the wetland areas were the proposed walkways, et cetera, which will not be included, as is, and as will not be the dog park. On the right-hand side for our funding scope that we're putting forward a proposal for, um, you'll see that the area that's involved is the left side of the park. If we look at those areas that we will be, we have designed and that we're looking to put forward project for, you'll see the lower area, which is the blue area, um, shows the new entrance off of Mass Ave and it shows parking for, I believe it's approximately 75 cars, um, in that blue area, including the handicapped, uh, spaces. Also in that area is the skate park, which we have been assured by the skate park organization that they're still moving ahead with that. They hope to get their construction done this summer. Um, so next to that would be the proposed basketball court and three pickleball courts. Just above the skate park would be the playground area. And then where you see that 2B and a pink dot, that is one of the, that is the pavilion building that would have restrooms, a concession stand, and, um, shade or cover for weather. The green area at the top of that are the two fields, the two ball fields. So where it says 2A at the top, that is the new 90-foot Diamond that's being proposed. Um, it is reoriented, uh, so that the, um, home plate is, um, toward the middle of the park rather than the outer edge. And the, just below that would be the improved softball field. Uh, the Chestnut Street parking is at the top and that has, I believe it's approximately 45 spaces that would be included, including handicap spaces that would be included in that parking off of Chestnut Street. There's also, um, that pink dot where you see the 2B, that is a separate restroom facility, just restrooms for that, that would be located basically between the two ball fields. I think we can skip to park history. For those who are not aware, um, land for Marshall Park was acquired in 1913 and I've been told that it was actually donated by a farmer whose last name was Marshall. We were wondering why it was called Marshall Park. So, um, years ago, the Parks Commission was designated to be the responsible entity, uh, for the care, custody, and control of the park. And, you know, historically, over the past decades, the use has focused on baseball and softball by high school athletes, youth ball leagues, and community adult leagues. So I think it's, it's helpful for people to understand how long the town has been working on trying to put this Marshall Park project forward. Back in May of '21, Town Meeting approved $50,000 for that Marshall Park master plan that was, um, proposed by the Open Space and Recreation Plan. In early '22, landscape architecture firm WOLA, the first firm hired, um, conducted a series of public meetings and surveys and sought extensive community feedback. Um, and they used that to determine what the town was looking for in an improved park and that was the basis for developing the master plan. In November of '22, Town Meeting approved an additional $184,000 for a master plan schematic design, which is, um, a slightly more detailed version of the master plan document. In January of '23, the Select Board allocated $1 million of ARPA funds for the project. We ended up not using all of that. Some went back to other town departments for their use, but we did retain approximately $200,000 of those funds. In June of '23, uh, the schematic design package from that original landscape, uh, landscape architecture firm was delivered to the town. And at that point, the town decided to move ahead with hiring the owner's project manager and the design firm, RDLA, to start moving ahead with the full design of the project. In the fall of '24, the updated cost estimate on the schematic design was when we realized that that master plan project was too expensive for us to consider moving ahead with. So during December 2024 and March 2025 this year, uh, we developed a new implementation strategy and funding scope and developed, um, what you see today in terms of the, um, project we're putting forward. We feel this still meets most of the master plan goals and as I said before, it does allow the future development of the park to include those other wetland area improvements when the town decides to do so. So the next step would be, um, the Town Meeting and Town Election in May for the funding. So what does the project cost and how are we going to pay for it? So just looking at the construction cost itself, our funding proposal, and then take a look at the estimated tax impacts of what this project would be. So for the cost for the proposed construction scope, many people know that a construction project has both soft costs and hard costs. Soft costs are typically those design fees or paying for the landscape architect. We're playing, paying the fees for the owner's project manager. Other soft costs include permitting that might be necessary outside of the town's area, um, DEP, for example, that type of thing. It might be, um, bringing in utilities, making them, uh, available to, um, meet the needs of the project. It would include materials testing and perhaps clerical expenses. So all of those soft costs for this project add up to $807,531. But we're trying to be conservative to make sure that what we asked Town Meeting for will give us enough to actually move ahead with this project. We're adding a 5% contingency to the soft cost and so the total for the soft cost would be $847,908. Then we have the hard costs. Hard costs are the direct construction-related costs. So it would be the labor and the materials to build what we're looking to do. So the, um, direct costs were $10,506,022. Then there are general contractor costs, including general conditions. They have some expenses for mobilization of the project, fencing around the perimeter of the project, that type of thing. They're also required to have their own insurances and bonds during the term of the construction project and there's escalation added into that. Escalation is an additional, uh, cushion of funds that we put in to make sure that as we purchase the materials over time during the term of construction, um, that if there are any cost increases that we have, the funds already built in to handle that. Basically, when you try to determine what a project is going to cost, you look at today's costs and then you add escalation to make sure that you're looking at the future costs for when the project is completed. To the hard costs, we're also adding design contingencies. That's important because with every project, you always run into something that goes wrong. We might find we have some ledge or there might be some other issue, uh, that we find that we need to make some adjustments in the design. So we have money built in to pay for the design firm to make those changes if needed. So we have, in total, the construction costs are $12,273,775. But again, to be conservative, we're adding 5% to those hard costs. So that brings the hard cost total to $12,887,464. So if we take the soft costs, add it to the hard cost, that brings our project total So in terms of how we fund this, um, based on feedback that we received from the board last fall, um, and in consultation with our current and previous town managers, um, the Park Commission is proposing that this, um, be done through a debt exclusion borrowing. And for people listening to this tonight, um, debt exclusion is borrowing that's done outside of the normal operating budget, outside the levy limit. Um, and doing a borrowing of this type requires that we need a two-third vote at the Town Meeting and we also need a majority vote at the ballot. There is a, an associated question on the ballot for this and that requires a majority vote of approval to move us ahead. So looking at the estimated tax impacts, uh, we worked with Town Manager, the Town's Finance Director, the Town's Financial Advisor, and Bond Counsel to determine what would be the appropriate period of borrowing for a project like this. And they go through an extensive review process to do that. Um, it, it looks at the useful life of all the different components and basically you try to establish the borrowing for a project to meet the useful life of the project. So we're not putting the cost of borrowing onto, um, a short period of time for limited users. We're looking to try to have that be spread over the useful life of the project. So we are looking at an 18-year amortization of the debt for the project. And looking at that amount, that $13 million that we were looking at for the project total over an 18-year period, that's roughly 46 cents per thousand to a home's assessed value. So if we look at the example of what we call our average home in Lunenburg, that's currently approximately $504,937. So the annual cost to that average home would be $231. If people want to understand what it would mean to them for their own home, what you do is you would look at your tax bill, take the assessed value of your property, divide that by a thousand, and then multiply that by .46 and that would get you the amount that you would have, an additional amount annually on your tax bill if this project is approved. Now with the, a project going forward, typically we start with doing some temporary borrowing, um, until the project's completed and then we do a permanent borrowing. So the, um, $231 would be, actually would be less than that for the first year or so. Um, and then, but once we start the full term of the permanent borrowing, it would be at that $231 for that average household. So the, um, going on to dotting our i's and crossing our t's, um, people may recall that when we were putting this project forward before, when we thought it was going to be the full master plan version, we did apply for numerous grants. Um, the prior, the members of the, um, Parks Commission, including Karen Menard, who's here this evening, um, worked very hard on writing those grant proposals and we were successful in getting a $1 million, um, grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund and a $500,000 grant from the Park Grant Program. Unfortunately, because we determined we could not move ahead with that full project and we did not have the, uh, funds available at that time to move ahead with the town's necessary matching funds, we had to let those agencies know that we wouldn't be able to take the grants at that time. But we were very gratified to have them tell us that please apply again because they felt our project, um, scored very well and, uh, they would find it, um, they would be very, um, glad to be able to work with us if possible. So looking at the grants that are available still, we still have the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant, which is a maximum of $1 million. Then we have the Park Grant, which is, um, park acquisition and, uh, renovation for communities and that is up to $500,000. We also have the, um, Americans with Disabilities Act Improvement Grant, which is up to $250,000. Now, I had said before that we previously received a mil- million dollars for the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant and 500 for the park. We may not get that same amount if, when we apply this time. Our scope has changed. That may make a difference in the awarding authority, but we do still feel that we have a very good chance of getting grant funds. We previously did not receive any grant from the American Disabilities Act, um, program, but we definitely still plan to reapply for that. Other grants are out there and there's probably more, uh, that we will be looking at. Uh, there's a Mass Trails Grant that has up to $100,000 of award. There's the T-Mobile Hometown Grant, which has up to $50,000. We have, um, the AARP Community Challenge for $25,000. And then there is a Mass MVP Grant Program, which does not give a limit. Um, and we're, you know, we'll be looking at all of those to determine if it's still feasible for us to apply for those at the time. So basically, we're, we are committed to apply, uh, for as many grants as would be appropriate for this revised project. Um, and as I mentioned before, we were urged by the grant administrators, um, to reapply for those two grants previously awarded. We were very pleased also to, um, be, um, told that there would be some assistance of a professional grant writer to help the Parks Commission. grant writer to help the Parks Commission develop and submit the grants this time So then we come to park maintenance. And our facilities director, Chris Ruth, has worked with both the OPM and the landscape design firm to determine what the likely components of the materials, et cetera, would be for the park. And based on that, he's put together a comprehensive maintenance plan that will be used moving forward to determine what the annual amounts might be needed for appropriate park maintenance. He's identified each one, estimated costs have been assigned to each item. And, you know, he will work with our town manager moving forward to request that those funds, those identified funds, be placed in the operating budget to the extent possible. The slide here just gives some examples of the current maintenance costs that we have specifically for Marshall Park. It's quite extensive. I do have to say, excuse me, the amount, the $23,425, if Mr. Ruth were here this evening, he'd probably tell you that that is not adequate, that he wished we had more, you know, available to help with the maintenance of Marshall Park. And while these are not his words, they're mine, it feels like sometimes we have to rob Peter to pay Paul to make sure that we get funds to do the different things that are needed, not only for Marshall Park, but other parks as well. But as you can see, he's taken that maintenance plan that he put together, and he has estimated the worst-case scenario of what the annual cost might be for this. And, you know, he's identified the new items that would be, such as bathroom cleaning, the stormwater maintenance, fence maintenance, the play structures and play surface maintenance, that type of thing. When you see internet here, that would be because they are planning to use internet-based locking systems so that it would be much easier to make sure that all the buildings and structures are secured. So that due diligence is being done for both, you know, looking for alternate funds to help provide some relief to the tax impacts for our residents. And we are doing our due diligence in terms of understanding what the maintenance for this facility will be moving forward. So the project's schedule, the phasing of this, if it moves ahead, as soon as we receive notice that the votes have passed, we would work with the design team to prepare the final design package. And permitting applications would start. We'd be preparing the bid packets, and the bid process would begin basically in October and end with a bid award in mid-December. We would issue a notice to proceed to the chosen contractor, and we would start to receive submittals from that contractor for the various materials that they choose to use in the park. The site work, however, would not begin until March of 2026. We're hoping that March will be, you know, that weather will be on our side, and we can begin as early as possible in March. And it's estimated that the site work, all the construction, would be completed by the end of May in 2027. There's some post-construction activity, you know, contract closeout, punch lists. We have warranties on any plantings that are done on the park, that type of thing. But for the most part, the project would be done in May of '27. So the next steps are the town meeting vote that we require on May 3. Again, this type of debt exclusion borrowing would require a two-thirds vote at town meeting, and it would require a majority vote of approval at the town election for that ballot question. And that's basically the presentation.
Thank you so much, Anita.
You're welcome.
We'll open it up to questions and comments from the board. Renee?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the smaller project, I see it in the backups.
Yep.
The hidden slide. Do you have the breakdown of the soft, hard costs and contingencies like you did for the full project?
I do. I don't have it on a slide, but let me review that with you. So at this point, what we're proposing is the larger project, as I just described it to all of you. However, the Parks Commission did determine that if it appeared to be appropriate at town meeting, based on the discussion that takes place on the town meeting floor, a motion may be moved forward to have the dollar amount be reduced and have a smaller project moved forward instead of what we're calling a full project. That smaller project, we're looking at $6,460,000. And I do have tax impact.
That's with all the contingencies and everything?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And as I, you know, as I described the tax impacts for that full project, if we do go with that smaller project, again, assuming an 18-year amortization, that would be roughly 22 cents per thousand on a home's value. So the impact on that average household would be about $111.
Okay. What impact does that have on the grants in terms of eligibility for some of the grants you plan on applying for? Are you, would the smaller project still qualify, or would you lose some grant opportunities?
Yep.
I saw something about number of parking spaces in one of them, so I think that would...
Yep. The park grant did have specific concern about the number of parking spaces that were there. So with the smaller project, we would likely still get some award, but it would be a smaller value. The Land and Water Conservation Fund, that million-dollar grant that we had been awarded had to do with the fact that a lot of that were the walkways around the wetland areas and a lot of the educational components that would have been included and under that full master plan design. So again, you know, it doesn't mean we won't be eligible for the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, but we would likely receive a smaller amount.
And we'd have to go back to the drawing board in terms of working with somebody. So the last time we did the grants, and there's a whole rubric in scoring, and we tried to piece everything together so that we'd get the highest score to qualify us for the highest amount of money, which we got on both of those grants. We would be able to work with whoever is helping with the grants at that point to go through it and to tease some of the stuff out of it that may not have been included in the first time around so that we could apply for the highest amount again. I'm not sure it's going to be the million dollars. I can guarantee it probably wouldn't be the million dollars, but we tried to wordsmith the lack of...
But it's also not a $13 million project.
Correct.
So I'm more, I guess my question is more, are any grant opportunities just off the table that you know of, that you would no longer qualify for?
Not that we'd no longer qualify for. Unfortunately, the one grant that we were planning to apply for was for a dog park from the Stanton Foundation, and they no longer have that grant program. So that's one that is off the table, but not because of design.
And the only other one that I can think of is one that we applied for and didn't get, which is the Trails Grant, because that was another one that was for the trails that went out to the wetland area. I'm not sure we can, I don't know if we're going to have the creativity that we would need to be able to try to fit in a paved walkway for our Trails Grant. I don't think that would be covered. So I'm not 100% sure we'd be able to apply for that one again, but the ADA Grant, we'd absolutely be able to apply for again. Park Grant and Land and Water.
Okay. Those are the big ones.
Those are the big ones, definitely on those. And then to look into some of the other ones. And to be clear with people, some of the reasons why we didn't apply for that T-Mobile one's been floating around for a bit, we just got to the, first of all, it was volunteers doing them, and the volunteer being myself, Anna Lockwood, and Anita did help with some of them. Time's not unlimited in our lives, so we ran out of time.
Really?
I know, hard to hear, but we ran out of time on those, but also as the estimates started to come back and we realized there was such that, the change in the estimates, we knew we weren't going, it didn't make any sense to continue to apply for grants that we weren't going to be able to utilize.
My other question is, I just want to make sure I understand the maintenance costs right. Is it more than double?
Basically, yes.
Is that...
How do you want to, go ahead, sorry. How do you want to look at it, though?
I don't know. You said the $23,000 was not what he wanted. Is it $53,000? Is he shooting for the stars, or is that...
He's not shooting for the stars. So here's what I'm going to say on that. And I don't know if Jen has the numbers in front of her. Every year since Chris Ruth has started, he has asked for an increase in the parks line for maintenance, every single year. I want to say it's been $10,000 every single year. It is not enough. We know that. And in order to get us to where we are, he's saying we need $53,000. He could use $53,000 right now.
That's what I'm wanting, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, it's one of those, I call it the budget shuffle, the line item shuffle that he does, you know, the robbing Peter to pay Paul stuff that goes on when he's short on one area in parks, he's, you know, shuffles things around to make it work on the facilities budget side, but...
So you're planning on paving the parking lot in the wintertime?
It's not...
It looked like, did I say paving? I meant plowing.
Did I say paving?
You said paving.
God.
Yes.
Plowing.
Plowing, yes.
Okay.
I mean, the hope is that many aspects of the park would be open still in the wintertime. You know, with some shoveling, you know, the playground area should still be somewhat usable.
Okay.
The basketball court, pickleball courts, you know, as long as we don't have extreme weather.
Basketball courts in the winter?
So...
I know somebody would be happy about that, not me.
But one thing I would like to say, though, is, and I think I mentioned it briefly when I was talking about the new expenses, that's a worst-case number. We will not need fence repair every year. We would not need, you know, major drainage maintenance every year. But, you know, because of all the questions we've had from people, we wanted to show that we really were looking at everything, and that is a worst-case scenario. So, you know, the years that we might not need that money for Marshall Park, it could go to, you know, the other parks that have, you know, just as much of a financial need as well.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no questions, just thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple. This one just came off of what, when I was just saying, isn't it plowed now during the winter? Do we plow the parking lot now?
It's not even paved.
No, it's not, but I thought, I thought it was accessible in the winter.
There's actually, in the winter, there's the, there's a, we'll call it a gate. There's the road that goes across.
Okay. I guess I was obviously misremembering. Two just questions, looking at the design. The restrooms that are in 2B, just the standalone restrooms, is that in the same location where the old restrooms used to be?
No. No, it's, it would be on the lower, lower level.
I know. Well, so the restroom that you're talking about is the standalone one that's not part of the concession area. It's up where the old, yes, it is where the old, in the similar area, and it's where the septic tank was. A little bit lower.
A little bit lower, but general same area.
It's in Wright Field, past the gate in Wright Field of the Nine-Foot Diamond today. That's what would be proposed, I think.
But that's a similar area to where it was.
It's not, it's not up on the hill where it used to be, right?
Talking about the green building that they took down a few years ago. It's really not there.
Because we're not using any of that existing structure or anything there. That's a whole new system going in. I mean, I know that building's gone, but...
Yes.
Okay. And then, having worked on the, worked at DPW and knowing people on Chestnut Street and the complaints about broken windows and things with the baseballs, is, I don't know anything about baseball, I'm not going to try to pretend like I do, but is rotating this field making that problem better or worse?
Yes, it is. Yes, it was the foul balls.
Foul balls, yeah.
That was the problem.
I can't pretend like I know. I just know that I used to field the calls. So this is actually better.
It is definitely better, yes.
That was it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the work on this. This was an excellent presentation. As I finished developing the wonderful Minnesota Building Design Committee, I think the order of this is exactly similar to what we had discussed, but this was really good. And thank you for all the work that's really, you know, years of this, a lot of phone calls, a lot of time.
A lot of tears.
A lot of tears.
A lot of tears.
But, no, certainly, I think at the end result of this is that we will all be a better community to have a resource like this within our own town. I think it will enhance, it will enhance the community at large, I think it will enhance the lives of many residents. And really, I know it wasn't said too many times today, but it's really the multi-generational aspect of this, where you have appeal across all ages. You know, it's so important as we age to stay active and stay mobile, and having this opportunity in the wintertime, in the fall, a safe place, you know, although we have beautiful roads here, we know that the speed limits can be a little high, which I support, by the way. But it creates a safe space for people to come out and walk and get that fresh air and be a part of the environment, the natural sunlight on their skin. So so many good aspects of this, and really leaning into, I think, who we are as a community, where, you know, we value our open spaces, we value nature, we value our agricultural roots. So thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you both so much. This was very thorough, and I want to thank all of the members of the Parks Commission, both current and former, for the years that went into this. I agree, and what I was going to say is pretty similar to what Michael Ray just said. We, I think, really need more shared community spaces in town. For me personally, I'm, obviously, I'm in this building all the time. Second to that is the library, but I think we really need more outdoor community spaces as well. I really love the conservation trails. I go there all the time, but that's kind of where I want to go when I just want to walk alone in the woods. So it's a very, you know, different experience, and Marshall Park is perfect for this. I personally was very excited for the walking trails, and I really wanted to be able to go there and park and get out and walk around and maybe walk around the pond a little bit. I'm sad that we're not, you know, considering that right now. Maybe we'll get to it at some point, but this is a really good first step. Obviously, you know, the fields need to be fixed. The parking is a real issue. I love that we have the ADA Playground in there, too. So I'm really excited for this, and I'm happily supporting it, and I really hope that we see this get supported and move forward this year. So thank you both so much for being here, and this presentation was great. So thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good night. All right. What do we have next? Town manager report.
So I have a very brief report this evening. The first item is that the House last week passed a supplemental budget for FY25, and included in that budget was $50,000 for Lunenburg for educational materials programs or services incurred by the town of Lunenburg. So the thought of that is that it's going to be $50,000 for the Lunenburg Public Schools. That was the intent by those that had filed it. The sub-budget now goes to Ways and Means. If it is not included on the Ways and Means side, then that'll be discussed during the conference committee. So it has a few more steps to go, but I did look at the bill, and it looks like there was a lot of local funding included in this sub. The next update is not great news. So Flat Hill Road Bridge, the underwater inspection team did go out and view the bridge, and there was a pretty significant pipe loss noted in areas that, at the last inspection, was not noted. So the district bridge engineer has said, quote, "Given the documented deterioration, including the newly observed section loss, we are recommending that the structure remain So that is unrelated to, this deterioration happened due to the water flow. It is unrelated to the contractor that was there, but the fact that there's not project work ongoing right now doesn't make that an easier pill to swallow. So we will be notifying the community that it is going to be remaining closed for the foreseeable future. I do have a call this week with legal counsel on the contractual issues. The work on the Eagle House Kitchen is almost complete with only punchless items remaining. And the Ritter Building roof had been delayed due to all the delays here with weather that we had on this roof. The contract is extended through April 30. I'll see if we have to do another contract extension for a month or if we can get it done by then. Recruitment, we had interviews today for the executive assistant to the town manager in select board position, and there's interviews scheduled for tomorrow. The sewer business manager offer pending just the background checks, and we weren't able to find...
That was the assistant, right? You said sewer business manager.
The part-time assistant.
Okay.
The, we have found folks to staff our beaches, so we have both lifeguard and the water safety, the director. We found a way to get that person trained for water safety instructor, so they are going to go and get trained, and that's great. The administrative assistant to conservation at 10 hours a week has been reposted, and there is a recording clerk at 10 hours a week that's a little bit more generic that's been posted. Definitely, if folks are listening to this and you have an interest in participating and getting paid to participate in your local government, those recording... and getting paid to participate in your local government, those recording, um, secretary positions are vital to, um, the functionality of those, uh, boards, so if you are interested, that would be great. Um, and the boarding committee vacancies, uh, remain the same. Um, I think that over the next week or so, we'll reach out to the folks that are on boards to see if they're interested in continuing on and maybe we'll have some more vacancies based on, on that. But that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Jen. Any questions for the town manager?
Yes. So for the bridge, um, can you, can you talk through this maybe a, a little bit more detail? Um, and I, I understand that you, we may not have all, all of it today. Um, so, is the read that we didn't, that it wasn't properly scoped on the front end of this or that additional damage occurred in the course of construction? Um, like, how did we end up here?
So, the, the damage to the pipe, the additional loss of pipe is due to natural, unrelated to the contract. It's due to the water flowing through the winter, it's, it's just since the last, since the last inspection that it is totally unrelated to the contractor. The contractor's, um, water control plan for actually doing the project does not appear to be adequate. And so, when they came out to do the work, um, their plan that they had would not have worked to cordon off the area so that they could do it. So their suggestion was that they return in the fall when the water is lower and, um, that's where we are now, um, we don't agree with that suggestion to, to wait until the fall.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know when the last inspection was?
I believe it was prior to the winter.
Okay, so it wasn't like two years ago or something?
No.
It was?
It was relatively recent, but I can follow up with the, to be sure, but I believe it was last fall.
Any other questions?
Um, well, it's more of a comment, um, but it's a question too. I want to acknowledge Jen, all of the work that she's been doing since you've, um, come here, uh, to our community. I know that jumping in, into the new role, uh, it's a lot, it's a lot drinking through a fire hose for sure, so I just want to be encouraging, uh, thank you publicly for the work you've done and I think it's really important, um, especially, uh, now, to get a breather in before we head into, uh, town meetings, so I know that you have, uh, some personal time this weekend, but I just want to encourage you to get a couple-day breather before this next big kind of push.
Push, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. All right, moving on to new business, the first is the letter of support for the establishment of a satellite emergency facility by UMass Memorial Health. Um, so this is a facility that they have submitted to, the DPH to build in Groton, and I drafted this letter, uh, basically in support of it, speaking to the need for more emergency services in our area. So the letter is under Satellite Emergency Health and then the SEF Letter of Support, and I'll just go ahead and read it. Letter of support for UMass Memorial Health's Proposed Satellite Emergency Facility, or SEF, at 490 Main Street in Groton. We, the Lunenburg Select Board, write in strong support of UMass Memorial Health's proposal to open a satellite emergency facility, or SEF, at 490 Main Street in Groton, Massachusetts. Since the closure of Nishoba Valley Medical Center, our region has experienced a significant reduction in access to emergency medical services. The absence of a local emergency facility has created a critical gap in care, forcing residents to travel farther distances during times of medical crisis. In a rural region where time is often the difference between life and death, this lack of accessible emergency care is deeply concerning. Moreover, the closure of Nishoba Valley Medical Center has placed an increased burden on our local EMS resources. Ambulance transports now frequently require longer travel and increased wait times, removing EMS resources from town for extended periods. This not only delays care for patients, but also diminishes our ability to respond effectively to emergencies. The proposed satellite emergency facility in Groton would provide vital emergency services closer to home for our residents and ease the strain on local EMS resources. We believe the establishment of this facility is not only necessary but urgent. The people of Lunenburg and the broader region deserve timely access to emergency medical care and the satellite emergency facility would be an essential step toward restoring that access. We respectfully request the Department of Public Health to approve this project and thank UMass Memorial Health for their commitment to meeting the needs of our communities. Any feedback?
Yes. Um, I think it's an excellent letter. Um, nonetheless, reading through what is actually getting proposed for this, um, satellite emergency facility, uh, as I read through it earlier today and, I mean, I thought they were kind of careful in their wording here, um, but it reads as if it's a stabilization facility, um, that there aren't actually any, um, operations that will occur, any kind of, um, any kind of emergency, you know, typically when you're, as I, you know, we think of levels of care, it, it becomes a, basically an urgent care-like center that does have some short-term bed capacity, but in terms of any kind of, you know, treatment that you would need at an actual hospital, um, this isn't going to provide it.
Right.
It seems as if it's really just, if you're nearby, we can stabilize you en route to a, you know, while you're going to Emerson or going to Worcester. And then, you know, because it's part of the UMass Health Alliance Clinton system, uh, and it notes that, you know, it's in Groton, but, you know, it's stabilizing you till you get to Clinton, uh, or stabilizing you till you get to Worcester. Um, so, I mean, I definitely think, you know, sure, support it, um, but in terms of like, what is a satellite emergency facility doing, I think that the name of it sounds better than the reality of it. Um, and I, I don't know if our residents in Lunenburg are going to benefit from going to Groton on the way to Emerson or what, or Clinton. I, I don't see that as a direct, real benefit to our residents, so maybe I'm missing something and, and if I can get some clarity on those points, that'd be helpful.
No, I think you're right, but I mean, I think it's still helpful to have this facility right next door, I mean, for those sort of critical care situations.
I, I certainly agree.
There's still a gap in emergency services in the area, absolutely, um, but we need something to close that gap and I think this is, that's something. Is it ideal? No, obviously not. Uh, we need more than that, but.
But, I mean, I guess.
You're right.
I guess from like a, a regional perspective, um, certainly, but from the residents of Lunenburg, um, you know, are the residents of Lunenburg going to be going to Groton to get stabilized on the way to Emerson or on the way to Worcester? I, I don't know if the answer to that is yes. I would assume the answer to that is no.
Maybe, I can't really speak to that, so.
Well, see, I mean, my, my comment is that's the opposite direction.
Right, yeah, no, I, that's, I understand. Any other feedback?
I think it's a, a very well-written letter.
Yep.
It supports our position, I mean, again, you know, I, uh, we've written a lot of these letters lately.
Yeah, I know.
And, again, I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll piggyback this on the health insurance, I mean, thing, it's like, I mean, this, there, somebody's got to be able to do something. Like, this, this is helpful, it's better than having nothing, but in no way replaces Nishoba Regional Hospital. And, and, I don't know, this seems to fall on deaf ears everywhere.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know what the answer to that is, but hey, listen, we give somebody an emergency, emergency place to go to for $35,000 a year in their insurance costs.
I agree, Tom.
Any other feedback?
I think it's a good letter.
Yeah, thank you.
Happy to sign it, but I agree with what both of, you know, our colleagues have said. This is certainly not, not what we need, but it will help us a little bit, I guess.
Right, I completely agree with that.
Izzy, Mr. Chair, is the expectation that this is the, I know this has been a big push, a lot of meetings, I mean, you know, I think, you know, a satellite emergency facility, I think, as most people hear that term, I think they would think of it as a satellite emergency facility.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but the description here is not a satellite. Maybe that's their language.
I've never even heard this term until this came.
I haven't either, when I hear that, it is kind of what I expect, right? Can you go there for, you know, are they going to have beds if you would need to be transferred to an intensive care unit? No, it's just that immediate EMS response, right? I mean, they're not going to be conducting operations, as you said, so that's exactly what I sort of anticipated when I heard the term satellite emergency facility.
It appears to be somewhere between an urgent care.
Yeah.
And a full hospital with an emergency room.
Right, right.
So there, I have a funny hunch that, and, and of course, again, I, I, I really don't want my comments to be negative, but it's really hard in this field not to be. People are saddled with emergency ambulance transport and it sounds like now they're going to get two of them. Because they're going to go there and if they can't do anything for them, then they have to be transported again, so now they're going to get two ambulances.
Right.
In the same, possibly in the same day.
They have life flight there too.
Oh, wow.
It could be an ambulance and then, yeah.
So, I mean, and, and it, it's, it's equally not helpful when the governor's, you know, secretary of human services totally misrepresents why the hospital closed to begin with, indicating that they just didn't have the foot traffic and they didn't have the, the, the access, you know, the, the, uh, the, the quote, "business,"
Right.
She didn't use that word, but they didn't have the flow of patients in there to support it, which is not true at all. I mean, steward totally ran the thing into the ground so they couldn't do things and they got rid of staff, so what happens when you get rid of staff? You can't accept patients. Oh, look at this, we don't have enough patients. Well, that's kind of a self-prophecy.
And I wonder, on the, on our elected officials' side, uh, certainly, uh, have tremendous respect for our entire delegation, but I wonder if, you know, our letter of endorsement is co-signing that your work here is done. Um, thank you for getting a satellite emergency facility that won't benefit the residents of Lunenburg too significantly, but are we signing off on this saying, "Thank you, job's done"? Because I don't think that the job's done.
I don't think it would be interpreted that way, but I can understand why that would be a concern.
What, what I would, and again, I only read it the one time when you read it, Mr. Chair, but one thing me may want to add a paragraph that indicates that we do not believe this adequately provides the healthcare services in the region, but we recognize that certainly having this is better than having nothing.
Yeah, I, I agree with you and after the conversation here, I kind of think that there's a gap, uh, in that letter. Um, so we could definitely add something, um, maybe in, in this, the, uh, second to last paragraph here, "The proposed satellite emergency facility in Groton would provide vital emergency services closer to home for our residents and ease the strain on our local EMS resources." Uh, we believe, so then probably right in here, we could add something.
Well, I mean, I think that, maybe that whole, I mean.
Or maybe just.
Would provide vital emergency services closer to home for our residents.
Right.
I don't know.
Change that.
I don't know if that actually captures.
What's, what paragraph?
The second to last one.
Second to last, okay.
Certain.
I, I would say, I, I, this is my, just one suggestion.
Yep.
In that, I would say, while we believe the proposed satellite, and then the whole thing would ease the strain, we certainly don't think it is, it closes the gaps efficiently and more needs to be done. However, we believe the establishment is not only necessary but urgent.
Okay, so I.
Something of that nature.
Right, I like that. So, while we believe the proposed et cetera, and then I get to, "and ease the strain on local EMS resources, comma, we recognize that, um, there will continue to be."
A gap in healthcare services in the region.
Healthcare services in the region.
Significant gap.
Yeah, significant, yeah.
A significant gap.
It's not just a little.
Yep.
Right. A significant gap in healthcare services in the region, and then it'll go on, this actually ties in pretty well.
Emergency healthcare?
We believe the establishment of this facility is not only necessary, but actually.
And the sentence before that, I mean.
Emergency healthcare?
Would provide vital emergency services closer to home for our residents.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, based on the description here, if our residents going to Groton on the way to Clinton or Worcester, if that is helpful.
But it doesn't, they don't always, they're not, it's not just a transport center.
Yeah.
They still do, they still do things, you know.
Yeah, they have radiology, they say.
Complex things, but they still, you know, if you have, you know, a broken arm or you need sutures or there's things they can, that they'll still do.
That would be different than what happens at Limmer's or Hospital?
Can I suggest the word "certain" between "provide" and "by"?
No, but they wouldn't necessarily be.
You can, I can put that.
Not like just like a, a.
So it's some.
Yeah, holding facility, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, they provide some minimal level of care.
Right, and that's.
It is one level up from an urgent care.
Right.
And open 24 hours.
Right.
Right?
Okay, so let me just change this formatting, let's fix that up. All right, so this is the paragraph now. While we believe the proposed satellite emergency facility in Groton would provide certain vital emergency services closer to home for our residents and ease the strain on our local EMS resources, we recognize that there will continue, there will continue to be a significant gap in healthcare services in the region. We believe the establishment of this facility is not only necessary but urgent. Do we want to change that last sentence to say something along the lines of, you know, the work isn't?
So, I would say, I mean, I would say something like, "even so." I mean, or something, just something like that.
Oh, even so.
Even so, comma, we've still, we, we still believe that the establishment of this is not only necessary but urgent.
Right, okay.
And I would, as you do that, I would modify the end of that last sentence where we say, um, "healthcare services in the region," instead of saying, "in the region for our residents."
Okay. For our residents, okay. Do you want to give us a final read or is this good?
Yep, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I thank you for writing it.
Yeah, no problem. All right, anything else?
Thank you, Caesar.
You're welcome. I think we've normally been putting votes on these, so is there a motion to accept the letter in its final form and then, well, I guess we're all signing it anyway, so we really don't even need to do that, but.
I would move that we support the letter as read by the chair, read and edited by the chair, for the establishment of a satellite emergency facility by UMass Memorial in Groton.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Disposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much. Moving on, what's next? Discussion on sick leave bank policy. So, we voted on this at special town meeting, but the way that we voted on it and put it in the SAP, we had to have a policy. And Julie, our HR director, has drafted that policy and is now ready for our review. So, yeah, Jen, do you want to say anything about it before we, uh, dig in here?
Uh, I can walk the board through it or you can just start and dig in, whichever.
Okay, we might as well just dig in, because we're going to have to go through it all anyway.
I have a question, it's a technical question.
Sure.
So, on the iPad, what's the easiest way to go back? When you're, once you're in a document?
I don't iPad.
Okay.
The back, what do you mean?
We're relegating.
Back arrow?
We're relegating Michael Ray's IT.
At the top, at the top. Michael Ray, at the top, the back arrow.
Got it.
Okay.
So just hit the, like a browser, just hit the back button?
Right.
Go back.
And unless, unless it's a document like this, then you have, might have an X, so it depends.
I keep going into things and I'm like, it, okay.
How do I exit?
Well, no, I mean, I see the exit button when there's there, but it's, you know, I wasn't sure if I was going to get out of it and one time I went too far back, so I was[1663.96] was like, is there a certain way to do this that I'm missing?
Yeah, no, it's just the back button. All right, so we'll read through it. Purpose: The policy establishes a sick leave bank program, known as the program, to assist eligible employees during medical emergencies, as required by the vote taken at the November 12th, 2024, Special Town Meeting. Program eligibility: One, all employees, non-union and members of bargaining units, are eligible to participate in the program. Employees in a classification of intermittent or seasonal are not eligible to participate in the program. I'm just going to just stop if you have anything that you-
Well, the first thing, I do have things, and this is, I'm going to raise this also with the next one, the next policy, which is, both of these are being open to all employees, but they're both in the SAP, which isn't applicable to all employees. So I have a problem, just inconsistency in application on that. And one would think-
Is this policy living in the SAP?
Excuse me?
Is this policy going-
No.
No, this is going to be our select board policies, so it could, it can apply to union personnel.
I mean, but we're fulfilling something that has to be in there, and I thought it was, again, there was no indication, well, there wasn't indication, there was at least the, it was the implication that it would be part of the SAP.
My understanding, Mr. Chairman, through you, is that the, that the intent was always to apply especially merit, but I'm not so clear on sick leave bank, but was always to apply it to all employees? And, and that why it went into the SAP to begin with, I can't answer that question. I think it could have possibly been a standalone policy, but-
That's my point.
Right, right, so that, that this is to kind of, if indeed the intent at Special Town Meeting was to apply it across, outside of the SAP, across all employees, the policies accomplish that goal. If that was not the intent that those were to apply, then I have a misunderstanding and perhaps we need to revise these.
Well, I think they should both apply to all employees regardless, I mean, that's my position, I don't know what Carter's intent was when he, you know, created the warrant articles for the SAP in particular, but I don't know, that's where I'm at.
What we approved, though, I mean, which is the other document that's in here that we approved at the town meeting, I mean, it says a sick leave bank shall be established no later than June 30th, 2025, for all employees except those in a classification of intermittent or seasonal. And I hear what Mr. Lonzo's saying in that, you know, when you're putting it into SAP, all employees means all SAP employees.
Right.
And that it doesn't mean all employees. And that, you know, as a condition of collective bargaining, you know, the ability to have a sick bank is a, is part of bargaining. And so, you know, it's rather proactive for us to say, here's our policy, because it eliminates that for being a point of discussion or negotiation.
For the collective bargaining.
But maybe it just represents what we want to happen and says, doesn't matter, we're not going to negotiate this, this is what we're willing to offer.
Yeah, I mean, my, my point of this was, first of all, I, to the intent, we didn't get a lot of opportunity to talk about the intent of this. This was done whirlwind, I objected to it being whirlwind then, I object to it still the way it was done because it has these kind of implications. Now, before, in my last three weeks here, before I get hate mail from everybody else in the unions, I'm not against the policy, okay? I just think policies need to, I mean, they all intertwine, they touch each other, they move each other, and, you know, to just throw out something and say, oh, oh, we meant this for SAP, we talked under SAP, and now we're going to open up to everybody, I'm like, okay, is that what the intent was? I don't know what the intent was.
Yeah, understood. So, I mean, would, do you want it to just apply to SAP? Is that what you're saying, Michael Ray and Tom?
I'm not saying to limit it there, I'm saying, well, first of all, we have time to look at this, so-
Yeah, of course.
Obviously, we can talk about it, I have other things about the sick day policy, this sick day bank policy, but, I mean, I'm not saying that, I'm just, it's a cautionary tale that, you know, we need to be more thoughtful. And everything that requires thoughtfulness requires time, and we always run into a time issue. And it's really probably one of the biggest frustrations in my whole tenure is being that. It's gotten worse over the last four years or so, and that's because of lots of different reasons, but, you know, we really need to be methodical.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, my opinion is I, I think that the reason why people unionize is because their employers aren't meeting their needs a lot of the times, right? I mean, you know, we, or companies are very successful, like the large corporations in the United States, you know, Facebook or, you know, Tesla and all of them, and being able to make sure they just keep hiring young people and firing everybody, so they can't unionize. But nonetheless, I think that it, I would like for us as a board to say across, just like I think we should do this with vacation and leave, is say, this is what our basic benefit package is and it applies to everyone equally. And, and that we take a hard stance on what that basic package is to equalize it, and I think sick bank should be one of those examples of that, where to me, this should be applied to all, but maybe there may be some nuances here that may be different for the SAP employees that aren't applicable to the bargain, so we'll go through it.
Right, no, I agree, I agree. Okay, we can be mindful of it. All right, so, where did I leave off? So, okay, two, employees become eligible for a program participation after they have been employed by the town of Lunenburg for a minimum of one year in a benefit-eligible position.
I have a question. And maybe I'm just too tired to think straight, but looking at the article from the annual or Special Town Meeting?
Mm-hmm.
In B, it says new employees having completed the six months waiting period shall be credited. Is that-
That's a separate section.
Yeah, it's only the highlighted bold italics, that's all that was in the article.
What is highlighted in this, in the Word document, the sick leave-
No, go back to the-
So you want to look under 70 dash 20 dash 1, sick leave bank. There's one paragraph under that? When you look under that, you see personal leave, that's a different section.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's a different section.
Okay.
I don't know what that sound is.
Sounds like an alarm.
Yeah. Go ahead.
It's gone.
Did it just stop? It just stopped. Okay.
He's okay.
For the public, there's some sort of alarm going off here, but it has stopped. Okay. All right, three, and we have two options here, it looks like. So the first one, employees who become eligible for the program must enroll in the program within one month of becoming eligible. Otherwise, they are not eligible to enroll until the following program open enrollment period that occurs in June of each year. So this is pretty much open enrollment each year and you have the option to enroll once during that period each year. Or, employees who become eligible for the program must enroll in the program within one month of becoming eligible. If an employee chooses not to enroll in the program, they may not enroll at a later date. So I just want to be clear, the intent of that second one is to say, once you become in, once you become eligible, you have one month to sign up and if you don't, you never can? Am I reading that correctly?
That's what it sounds like. That sounds pretty draconian.
Yeah, I don't like that at all.
No, I like having the annual, like, open enrollment period like everything else.
Yeah.
Why, why, are they just provided for us to have the, have the options to look at?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I also don't, I mean, I guess I could see the intent, you know, if someone never, you know, was an employee for 10 years and never participated and then they get sick and then they want to use it, I get it.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't-
I like the option of saying, hey, maybe, you know, life circumstances change, you know, you can sort of reassess whether you need it each year, just like any other benefit.
Yeah, it's one, it's one-
Well, what I would, what I, I don't know if it comes up again, because I only read it briefly today before the meeting, you know, this morning. I think if somebody decides to dis-enroll, there should be a lapse that you can't go back in for like three years. Like, if you're going to come out, then you can't come back, you can't go in and out, this is not, not a revolving door.
Sure.
I can understand saying, hey, I don't need it, and some point you need it, but if you enroll and then you dis-enroll, then you can't enroll for X amount of time.
As it is currently drafted, you cannot unenroll.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to ask, okay.
Yeah, well, that's also another thing.
Agreed.
Problematic.
Yeah, okay.
But I also would be, say, this is clearly not my area of expertise and by profession or any other way, and I don't have any other template to go by. And that's, if there, if this was based on something, or maybe several sick bank, I mean, it would be nice to see what other people do.
Do they have examples?
Yeah, I was curious about that too, actually.
Yeah, I've seen gross abuse of sick bank, where you hire an employee, you know, and I'm aware of a situation currently that's like this, without going into the details, where you hire an employee and some people just want to game the system, and when you have that unlimited sick bank, because everyone's been donating to it, you're kind of stuck in many ways where you have an employee that's out far longer than they ever were in, and anyway. I don't, I'm not, I don't think our employees are really at risk of doing that. I don't have a problem with the, uh, second option of them not being able to, and, you know, it's a one-time thing, but at the same time, you know, I can hear my colleagues on this one.
Strongly opposed to that personally.
Yeah. It doesn't make sense for, you know, in the first month of someone's employment, like, there's a lot going on.
It's, it's the 13th month.
Yeah, you have to be, going back to part two here, you have to be a full year in a benefit-eligible position.
Will they get some sort of a notification or something from the benefits person?
Yes.
Well, so it's-
It goes on to say that the sick leave bank committee is responsible, yep.
Yeah, and that, yeah, okay, so let's go on, we'll talk about that.
Question, not saying you shouldn't, yeah.
Okay.
No, no, thank you.
So for enrollment in the program shall be voluntary. Okay, moving on to program design. One, the sick leave bank committee shall notify employees that become eligible for the program that the employee has become eligible for membership in the program and the deadline for enrollment. So that answers Amanda's question.
Can I stop you before you keep going, though? Right away, structurally, shouldn't the definitions be before this?
I was going to say that, yeah.
Move the sick leave, move the sick leave bank committee.
My first question was, well, who's the committee? And I knew it was the next section, but-
Same.
Definition should always be before we use the word.
Yeah, so, do we want to keep going or do we want to jump down to talk about the definition of the sick leave bank committee?
I'd like to just read it as presented, if that's okay.
What do you mean?
Review it as presented, like, just keep going through it.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so two, upon enrollment, each member of the program shall contribute two sick days to the sick leave bank. Each member of the program shall contribute two days to the bank at the beginning of the following fiscal year. Thereafter, members shall contribute one day at the beginning of each fiscal year until such time as the bank has accumulated at least 300 days. If the bank should drop below 50 days, the sick leave bank committee will assess each member of the bank two days annually until the bank reaches back up to 300 days. So that's a lot to process right there. Any initial reactions to that? I'm going to have to read through that like a couple more times. Okay.
So if you hit 300 and I want to enroll, I don't put any days in? Because you've hit 300 in the bank?
No, first enrollment, if you're coming in, even if we're at 315, you're giving two the first year, two the second year, but then you don't have to, then it stops. So the two and two is for everybody.
For the first years.
Even if it's over 300?
Because you're new into the program.
Anybody new automatically has to give two days.
Yeah.
Two, two days for two years.
So three days.
It's the annual renewal days that you don't have to do.
But it sounds like if you have questions about that, that we should have some clarifying language here.
Yeah, because I read that as exactly what Nancy just said, that if a new member joins and if it's at 300, that's the cap.
Right, yes.
It sounds like they're putting too much in one paragraph, they need to split that up.
Yeah.
All new members will be giving that.
Regardless of the 300-day cap.
Then go to the next point.
Is there anything special about 300 days? Why was that number picked? Is there any?
From another policy. It's from another policy.
Another sick leave bank policy?
It's what?
It's from another community's policy, that's-
Interesting. Okay, three, sick day contributions to the bank are non-returnable and election to participate in the program is irrevocable.
I do not agree with that.
I don't agree with that.
I think, I agree with non-returnable.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't feel to get your time out.
Sure.
But if you want to choose to stop participating, I think it's-
You should be able to come out of the-
Crazy to say people-
But I do like the idea of if you decide to leave the program, you can't get back in for like three years, whatever.
For like three years or something, yep.
Yeah.
I do like some kind of, because you don't want people doing the hokey pokey.
Can I ask why? Because if you can't get your time back, and say you withdraw and then the next year you're going to-
Because if I know I'm going to go, I know I'm planning an operation one year, I'm going to plan it so I'm in, so that I can get extra days.
Use the bank instead of my own days.
Yeah, you're using the bank, as Michael Ray said, to, to gain, you know, to kind of game the system.
But that could still happen, no matter what.
No, no, not if you penalize people for not getting in.
Yeah.
So if you're not in, good. If you're, once you're in, if you decide to come out, then you can't join it for another three years.
But that raises another question. You have to use your own sick time before you can take it from the bank? Okay.
Yeah.
Is that in here?
Yeah.
Okay. Obviously, I haven't read this.
Yeah.
So on this one, I mean, I don't have a problem with the irrevocable, but it sounds like everyone else does.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I agree that, how do we, you're just making a note and Julia makes some modifications that we'll do for a year. Okay.
Is three, is three, what?
I think three years is fair, yeah, that way you don't get the in and out, or you don't get the gaming of the system, or, you know, I mean, obviously our employees aren't here to game the system, but, you know, when, it's possible, so I think three years sounds good to me.
Three years, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. Okay. Unused sick days shall remain in the bank at the end of each fiscal year and shall continue to accumulate from year to year.
I, just to clarify that, because of the language, it doesn't, when you say unused sick days, you don't know if you're talking about the persons, the members or the bank, you should say the bank.
Thanks.
The unused bank sick days shall remain in the bank, otherwise people think, oh, if I didn't use it, those all go in the bank.
Yeah.
How is this going to work? Is it days or is it hours? And how does that whole, does that get broken out later in here? Because I know-
No, it doesn't get broken out.
That is a very difficult thing to deal with benefit-wise, at least it has been historically, with people that are prorated and like someone that works 32 hours might only have, their sick day is actually six hours, but somebody else's it is eight hours, so I don't know if that has been talked through with Nancy on her-
No, 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 no. So this is, I'm going to share this with all staff to get their feedback, so that's a good point, though.
What's a day?
What's a day?
Because some bargaining units have days, some have hours.
Well, I think a day is based on their regularly scheduled hours, right? I mean, so someone who's 32 hours-
But pay-wise, if you're talking about-
32, not 40.
Somebody at a different rate or a different amount of hours, their day contribution is still-
Because of that, I think it should be by hours. That means if somebody's full-time and they only work six-hour days and their, their sick day is six hours, they should donate six hours.
It's a complicated issue because then what happens on the ritter when they work their 10-hour days? It's, it's a more complicated, I don't know what the solution to that is.
Right.
But whether it's days or hours, I think does matter.
Part of my reasoning, and I think this is going to extend beyond my tenure here, but one of my reasons would be I'd like to hear from the person administrating the program, because we can't have people like spend oodles of hours just to make sure this program works. So I'm willing to simplify to some degree of what makes it just easier to run.
Yeah. Where did I leave off? Okay, five, applications for enrollment in the program shall be in writing on a form approved by the sick leave bank committee. the sick leave bank committee. Speaking of the sick leave bank committee. The program shall be administered by the sick leave bank committee. Committee. At a minimum, the committee shall be comprised of one member of the select board, the town manager, or the assistant town manager slash HR director, one representative of the non-union employees, and one representative from each participating collective bargaining, oop, you just, unit. The committee shall not be considered a quote "public body" and is therefore exempt from the requirements of the open meeting law.
That's a big committee.
Yeah.
It is.
I don't know, how many, how many bargaining units do we have? Like, six in town, something like that?
It's not, so not school, so, uh, clarify, four?
Four, yeah.
Only four, okay, alright, so, last one I thought, sorry.
I mean, I don't know enough on the, I mean, I've read a lot on the, you know, when you can go into executive session. But it sounds like, you know, most, anytime you're talking about anything personal with an employee, that's not a public commerce
Well, right, and so I want to run this by counsel.
Yeah.
I don't think that this is a public body, because it's something that I, you could say that I administer the bank, or that Julie administers the bank, and that we could do that solely within our capacity. And so delegating that out and having people, or, or having people give feedback to that, I think is gonna make it not a public body, because the decision-making could have lied with just us.
Like, the PUC is not a public body.
Right.
No, and that's what I compare it to, right? It's kind of similar to that.
So I just want to verify that with counsel.
I agree. I'm for it, I'm for the language, as long as it's
Because can we add something that if a union decides not to have a representative come, you know, is there something that we can do that this committee could still function if there is not an active member from each body? Hopefully, there will be.
Oh, so something about quorum?
Basically?
Or representation.
Yeah, like, what if a union decides not to have a member representative?
I would do the quorum part.
That was an issue that we had with PUC previously. I don't, I wouldn't want this to be held up, because, oh, hey, you know, the clerical union doesn't have a member. I don't know
So would we just be defining a number?
Because it's not a public body, I don't think, I don't think you need a quorum.
It's a non-issue.
Maybe.
Are schools included?
No.
No. They have their own something, right?
So what's typical of sick leave banks, right, is that each collective bargaining unit would have their own bank? That's how I've seen it, and that they're really segregated separately?
Yeah.
So this is a little bit different?
Mm-hmm.
Right? With there being one pool?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how the
Is that better or worse?
There it goes again. I don't know if, I don't know if the unions would object to this or not, because again, you know.
And we are gonna get that feedback soon, too, so we'll have that.
And if, you know, opening that many people, I mean, three hundred hours now becomes too low.
I think it's three hundred.
Three hundred, yeah.
Is it three hundred hours or three hundred days?
Days.
Three hundred days, that's all, almost a year.
Yeah.
Except when you have somebody with, yeah, a major.
People with cancer.
Well, there should be limits on, you know, I think there should be limits on days.
Maybe we could, have we only seen one other policy?
No, but I put a note that we should analyze
Yeah, maybe, maybe if we have a couple other ones, we can look at
And then size of the town compared to that number.
Yeah, good idea.
Because I have no frame of reference for what.
Same. Yeah. I was looking for that.
Especially if we convert days to hours, because I don't, I mean, three hundred days and hours is gonna be some
Right. Because the, because the problem, I think, again, just logistically that you run into is, you know, for some reason, it's down. There's been a lot of people out, and there's fifty days left, or like that trigger point, and there's less than fifty days left, and then one person goes out with a critical problem, and then somebody else after them does, and what do you do when the bank, like, is there a policy? What happens when the bank is zero?
Yeah, depleted.
Can we, is there, I don't think I saw it, unless I missed it, because I did just scan this quickly, is there something in there where people can do additional donations in that situation? Because if not, can we add that?
We can add that.
Because that was a situation where, in town, when we didn't have this before, and there was someone, you know, that needed it, there was, there's tons of people that have a lot of time that often want to donate more. So if we could add something about a voluntary
Right.
Donation.
And there's gotta be something that says, what happens if somebody applies and there's no days?
Hmm.
Then they're gonna say, well, what did I donate all this for? And now I can't even use it. So this, this is a, I think, a serious problem.
Okay. All right, so moving on. So two, the committee shall elect a chair, vice-chair, and clerk to preside over and keep records of committee meetings. Does PUC do that as well?
Yeah.
Do they have like a chair?
They have a chair, and they keep records of their meetings, yeah.
I mean, it's not formal minutes, because it's not
Right, it's not minutes, but it's records.
Yeah, just, just curious. No, sorry, I knew there was a chair. So the committee shall establish forms for application to participate in the program, to receive benefits from the program, and any other forms necessary for administration of the program. The committee shall be authorized to approve or disapprove applications for enrollment and for receipt of benefits.
Well, if that, if somebody's gonna be doing that, there better be some criteria about what they're doing this, other than, I like you, I don't like you.
Why is it not
Really, only if they're not eligible. For app, for membership, that they would, if somebody
So I think it should say that.
Okay.
It should be more clear, because that could be, there should be no reason, if you're a full-time employee and you meet the requirements of the policy, that you don't get in.
You get denied, yeah. I agree.
And if there is a reason that we want to put out there, then we need to say, you know, if
So just say, based on, based on enrollment policy on there, at the end of that sentence.
And do we really want the committee to be doing that?
Well, somebody has to, somebody has to administer it, right?
Right.
Right. Can I ask why we have a committee versus
It's really, for the, for the committee comes into play when you're making the decisions around whether to grant bank time, and the different, how, you're really evaluating what the request is, what the bank looks like. It is discretionary to an extent, when it comes to whether or not you're gonna grant bank timeout.
And it does allow for more people to be a part of that. It allows for representation, or SAP, collective bargaining units to be a part of that, too.
So then I think we do need to have a quorum listed. If, if there's gonna be a vote like that on whether things are approved, if you don't have active membership
Yeah, that's a good point, actually. Yeah, you don't want like two people being there at the meeting.
Right, so there's, there's gotta be something, if this is how it's being approved, and it's not just, which it should be, I get, there needs to be a vetting process, then I think that we need to have that more delineated.
Yeah, especially for determinations, there should be a voting quorum. Okay.
And I think that we should say how they're going to approve or disapprove. Right now, it just says they're authorized to approve or disapprove applications.
It's quite discretionary, typically.
Is that usually how these are? Again, I'm not that familiar with it.
I think sick leave banks are generally, err on the side of generous.
But I meant more on like the process, like, how does one of
Oh, a vote, you mean?
Like, yeah, like, like, not, not, not talking about like what the qualifying medical concerns are, more like, okay, if you want to apply for the sick bank, what do you do? Who do you reach out to?
Yeah, so that's what the committee has to come up with. They're being charged with coming up with all those forms and the criteria.
And there's a form, yeah. So I think it's all the forms.
But, but basically, showing where your, where your benefit time is at currently, right? So what are your accruals, what have you law, what have you already used towards whatever the situation is? And what is the circumstances?
See, I think we need to include that in this policy, at least the basics of it, personally. Maybe I'm overthinking it.
I think for three, I mean, I think, I think the way, you know, is that you have a committee, they can establish the rules. And I think where we have the language, committee shall establish forms for application, I think we should say shall establish rules, comma, forms for application, and then just say not inconsistent with this policy.
What Amanda's saying, that we should establish rules and policies.
I'm opposite. I think they can, if they want to, if, I think giving them the ability to create their forms or whatever, however they want to, they want to implement it, but I think this policy should include the rules.
Yeah.
Well, this is, and this is where, this is where involving unions is gonna be things. So if they don't disagree, if they disagree, there's like, who, they complain to the union, it's not part of the union contract, so who do they complain to?
Right, this, I think this, if, this needs to be really clear, in my opinion. I don't think we should give that committee the power to make the rules over it.
The practical application is that there will still be some discretion that the committee has in a, in a policy law.
I don't, I don't have any problem with the committee making the rules, I have a problem with the, what do you do if you're on the committee and you're representing union employees, and they, that's something, something's happening that you don't like, and there's no
There's no grievance procedure or anything.
Right, what is the grievance procedure? Right. And that, that gets, that, that would be really complicated.
Yeah.
I mean, again, it's one of these things that it's, it's a great idea, but how to implement it is going to be
It sounds easier than it is.
Right.
Okay.
If, maybe if we do have some other policies that we got to look at, and I can look at my own, too, because I really haven't looked besides this one. I wonder if there are any other towns that do have some sort of a grievance procedure or an appeal procedure to the, to, I don't know, what would be two?
Yeah, maybe, we can, we can see and
Well, you picked so-and-so over me. You gave so-and-so days, and I have a similar condition, and I didn't get days.
All right, so we can look into that more and continue talking about that.
Just as an aside, I am very in support of this. I just want to make sure it is
I know you are.
It has, no, I think it does have to be done, right.
This has to be done correctly.
Where did we land as a majority on the rules? In terms of delegating, are we keeping it, or where, where do we add?
I don't know if I have a strong opinion on it now, I want to think about it a little more. I think there's some benefit to having them in the policy itself, so that we can kind of dictate what they are.
I want to see some more, because I could, I could go review some other policies and be like, oh, no, I was wrong. This is just the off-the-cuff
And I can't even come up with rules right now without seeing other examples.
Right, and then the word rules is like, it's not, it doesn't even feel like the right word.
I have to think about it a little more.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, yeah.
So I'll think about it a little more, and I'm sure that the rest of us can do that as well. Okay, five. Any information provided to the committee shall be held in strictest, strictest confidence by the members of the committee. All records of the committee shall be kept on file in the office of the assistant town manager slash HR director at Town Hall.
I would say that we have to be way more specific in that language, that has to, has to be compliant with all federal and state rules, including, we better come up with a list of them, like HIPAA, and this and that, and whatever kind of list we have. Not that, oh, you gotta keep it in the strictest confidence, I don't think is a legal term.
Right, yeah, I understand. Completely agree.
We want compliance.
Yep. Okay.
I would have a town council weigh in on that, too.
Yeah, for sure.
Not even weigh, not even weigh in, I would have a town council write it.
Yeah, draft that part, yeah, that's fair. Okay, six. The committee shall be required to provide an annual accounting of the sick leave bank program in July of each year to the select board and the personnel committee. At a minimum, this accounting shall include the number of members, the number of days remaining in the sick leave bank as of June thirtieth, and the number of hours slash days distributed in the previous fiscal year.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Seven. The committee shall advertise and hold an open enrollment period in June for each year for employees that are eligible for the program but have not yet enrolled.
Sounds good.
Okay, moving on to benefits and benefit eligibility. One, to be eligible to use program benefits, the applicant must have been a member of the program for a minimum of six months, and have exhausted their own accumulated sick, vacation, personal, and any other paid leave. I think that's fair.
Except that we're gonna have a conflict. I just saw it in two sentences, so keep going.
Oh, okay.
An internal conflict.
Okay, okay. Two, members who are receiving workers' compensation benefits for lost time are not eligible for benefits under the program.
Makes sense.
That's fair as well. Three, an application for program benefits must be submitted to the chair of the committee on a form provided by the committee. Applications may be submitted prior to exhaustion of sick, vacation, personal, and any other paid leave.
That's where we have that internal.
Yeah, I don't know if that is
I can understand
Yeah, I don't
Yeah, of course. It's anticipation.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
It's anticipating that you're
I'm going to have surgery, I'm gonna be out, you know, six weeks, I only have two weeks of paid leave left.
Right.
Yeah, it gives you time to put in the
If it's a plant, an event that you can kind of schedule and plan for, if it's an emergency.
Because in three, it just says applications may be submitted prior, right? So I think that's okay.
Can I ask a question, and maybe I shouldn't even ask it, but, shh. Well, it's so complicated when you're talking about people's medical issues, and obviously, sick leave is a medical thing, like pregnancies, like birthing, is that something that's even considered in part of this? Or, or, this would be, so this is just anything that someone had to be out, they could apply for? So we, we wouldn't be putting any sort of language in here in terms of what you'd have to be out for?
No, it wouldn't have to be like a serious, and then define serious medical condition. It's really, I mean, if you
I mean, is that common, common for this?
No, typically, this is, this is, this is heart attacks, cancer, strokes.
Right, so, but like, is that not, that language not in here for like a serious medical con, you know, something? Or is it the way we have this written, how these are usually written?
Could you say that again? I didn't follow that last
Is, if, in looking at other policies on how sick banks are done, is there any delineation of saying like, you know, these are for these reasons, these are for emergent reasons, you know?
I don't know if I would want to list out all the eligible reasons.
I'm just curious. It's not typical?
Yeah.
It's not typical, it's just the sick leave bank is typical?
I would say anything that you could use your own sick leave, sick leave for, that you could use it for.
And that's why, going back to our prior conversation, like, there is a benefit to having a discretion of the committee for that reason, right? So I know you listed pregnancy as, you know, I know someone who's in ICU for two months because of a pregnancy. So, you know, sometimes, you know
Right, so very different, yeah.
You know, a normal procedure ends up not
It's also, I mean, the word sick leave really should be really modified. It's really sick slash medical leave. Almost every company, at least in the private sector, does that. It's sick and medical leave. I mean, a normal pregnancy isn't sickness.
No.
It's just, I mean, you have medical leave because you have recovery time.
Yeah.
Not because you're sick. Pregnancy is a sickness.
Or because there are really bad complications.
Well, that, that is a sickness. That is a sickness. But I mean, even a normal pregnancy is not a sickness, but you still need medical leave because you need recovery.
I think I'm mostly thinking of situations where we're talking about parental leave, and this might not make me super popular among everyone, but people that are going out on leave, I don't even know if I want to finish that sentence.
Or not the birth.
That are not
Yeah.
For adoption, even.
Not sick or not, like, is this for a medical condition, or is this for anything that you could use sick leave? I guess that really isn't a fundamental thing. Is this anything that you could use sick leave for?
Yes, it should, it should be that.
Right.
In my mind, it should be anything you can use your current sick slash medical days for, you can use the bank for.
Does, does that include taking care of
This is where I was going with that.
Because like, paid family medical leave in the private sector?
Right.
You can use it.
That's twelve weeks for each birthing parent.
I think that's exactly what, right.
That is where I'm going, we're driving it.
Maybe there needs to be an exemption here, that if someone is eligible, otherwise eligible for paid family medical leave, that, we don't participate in it fully on the state
I'm not saying, I, I think we have something in here that it's about the employee's own sickness, and I just want to benefit eligibility. I, I think that it doesn't, I think it specifically doesn't apply to non-birthing parents.
I just, I wouldn't want to put that burden on the committee to say, like, okay, you know, you're not the birthing parent, and so you, you do, or you don't qualify.
It's in number four. It's in number four.
Okay, and that's the next one, too. So we can, all right, we'll just read that. So four, to be eligible for program benefits, the applicant must have a medical condition verified and documented by a physician, which requires a prolonged period of recuperation and/or absence from work, resulting in the exhaustion of all earned sick, vacation, personal, or any other paid leave. I think that's
So this answers the question. So this is, this is, so this does not mean for any use of your sick time, because right now, you can use sick time to care for your children, your parents, your
But if we, I mean, think that one through, right? I mean, let's, let's take any employee whose spouse just had, has a stroke. I mean, you know, I mean I mean, you know, I mean, they're gonna need, how, how well are they gonna be able to work for us? If they don't have the care for their loved one at home? I mean, why, why wouldn't we make it eligible for those situations? Because I mean, it's not gonna be forever, but it's, it, it.
Here's, here's the scenario that somebody always brings up. You're a single parent.
Yeah.
And your child gets really sick. So are you, because it's not me sick, I can't use my sick ti, I can't use the sick pay to care for my sick child because I have no more time left? Or I'm going to exhaust it because what they have is going to be lengthy?
I think I would like to know from employees.
Yeah.
Um, if that would change their participation in the program one way or another. You may have employees saying, I'm not giving, as much as I feel bad for you and I might send you a casserole or help you out, I'm not going to give up my day for not you, right?
Yeah. I think that's a good way to approach this, is to talk to the employees to see how they would.
Okay.
If, if they're the participating members and if it's an overwhelming yes or an overwhelming no, then maybe we, maybe it makes it a decision for us.
So are municipal employees eligible for paid family medical leave? I didn't think so.
You would have to adopt it. And as far, at last count that I knew, zero municipalities have adopted it in the Commonwealth.
Because of the cost.
Because of the cost. And, and that you don't know what it, it's a known cost at the time you adopt it.
What were you gonna say, Michael Ray?
Nope.
Okay. All right, five, the committee may require an applicant to undergo a physical examination by an independent physician at the town's expense. That's interesting.
This is where you're into the fraud.
Yeah.
Second opinion.
Yep.
This is in a lot of, I think, all of our union, our bargaining agreements.
This is, this is a fraud protection.
Yeah, makes sense.
Makes sense.
Something. Okay, six, no more than 15 days may be granted from the bank to any one applicant at a time. Requests for additional days must, must be accompanied by a new application.
So I think this should be a lot longer than.
Yeah.
I do too.
Yeah.
Um, more like 45 or 60.
Well, I like what we're getting at here, but I, I, I agree. It needs to be longer than 15, but I do like that you have to sort of check in and sort of submit a new application.
Um, I mean, in the minority, I'm fine. Fifteen, I guess 20 would be fine, but, but it's a big, yeah, that's 20.
Yeah. It's like, just rightively.
Twenty days would be a month.
Two weeks.
Twenty days would be a month. No, no, 15 days would be three weeks. It's workdays.
Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah.
So, but, the real question is, what is the turnaround time on the application?
Right.
That's what you have to, that's what has to be done.
Process.
Right.
Because that's frequently meeting if it's every three weeks.
Right, and if the whole, if that whole committee of, you know, however many people has to meet.
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot of coordination.
Yep.
If someone is out for six months.
Too quick turnaround, I think.
I do see the, the, having the review process, but I don't know what that. Because you, yeah, yeah.
I would be okay with really bumping this up. I don't think it should go over two months.
I'd want to look at other policies.
I would, yeah, I have to think about it a little more, but, yeah, I think 15 days is probably too short.
Does it vary for full time, part time? I don't know.
I mean, as we get through this, what's striking me here is, I'm wondering if this would be far more simple if it was administered initially, you know, based on the program eligibility. If it was an HR decision and that any leave required beyond 15 days, then that would trigger the committee.
And then the trigger, the committee could be the grievance.
Okay, so it's like a threshold, kind of an HR director.
Jen looks aggressively against that.
No.
Yeah, it really, it really, when it comes down to the fairness or the perceived fairness by the employees who are applying, that they're going to talk or their application is going to be considered by a panel of their colleagues versus one decision maker. And it really only comes down, it becomes only problematic in two scenarios typically. One is where you're denied and then it's a lot, maybe you don't like it still, but it's an easier pill to swallow if you were denied by a panel of your colleagues. And two is if, is if somebody thinks, oh, it's unfair, so and so is being favorite, is receiving favoritism from this one individual.
I can understand that.
But the other side of it though is that, you know, if you have, you have to be willing to share a serious medical condition that maybe isn't something like a stroke or isn't something like a heart attack, but it's something a little more, I mean, not everyone wants to say, hey, I have a hysterectomy coming up and I'm gonna be out of time, right? I mean, isn't that, so I, it, the way it's written, you're requiring someone to share really private information with a large group of people in the first instance, and that's why I'm just wondering as we're going through this, like, is there a way to make them eligible for some of it? And then, you know, if, you know, they need that time, then they're willing to share it with this larger audience? But in the first instance, it just seems like maybe the audience should be a little smaller.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're, you're both making really good points here, so, I don't know.
I go back to, we need to see some other policies on how other towns, because other towns do do this. So how it's being done, I don't, I don't know, but yeah, that is, that could stop people, certain people, depending on what their conditions are, from applying. If they don't want that amount of people to know.
Right.
So maybe there's a way to have the, can, I don't know, because that defeats the whole, sorry, I'm thinking a lot. I was gonna say, maybe there's a way to have, you know, HR determine whether it was a qualifying event and then it goes to the committee for approval, but that defeats the whole.
But there's also like emoti, like mental health issues that I'm sure could fit into this as well.
Oh, for sure.
People maybe aren't willing to share with their colleagues. And, you know, do you really want someone suffering through a mental health concern at work? You know, because they're, don't want to share it.
Yeah, no, I understand. Okay.
I kind of go back to, maybe it does go to the HR and then the appeal process could be to a committee if you wanted to appeal a denial. Still have the committee involved in the, in the form setting and in that kind of stuff, but maybe the actual application of it, it only goes to the committee if the employee wants to, to grieve for.
Right, and we could say in that appeal process.
And then if they want to appeal, then they would have to decide if it's worth it to them to disclose that. I don't know, that's just a thought.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, that makes sense.
But that still puts a lot back on the one person, as, as town manager said.
Yeah. All right, seven, any sick leave accumulated while an employee is receiving benefits from the program shall be returned to the bank.
Makes sense to me.
Okay, we talked about day. Number eight.
Yep, eight, for purposes of this program, a quote day shall equal the rate at which an employee accrues sick leave per month.
I think that's gonna be, that's totally, totally undiscernible what that means.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
See above.
Shall, a day shall equal the rate, so first of all, days aren't rates.
Yeah.
Well, can I ask, like, where, what was the reasoning for that? Well, yeah. How much?
I think we should use simple, simple.
It should be hours.
Hours. So would it be the amount of hours that an employee works in?
Well, that goes back to the threshold question that number more was asking earlier of, is it a day? Is it hours? Do we do about six, six versus eight? So that'll get, this will get sorted in the sorting of that other question.
Yep.
Right, makes sense.
This is all gonna be tied to how, how difficult it's gonna be to account for all this.
I still, this still brings up my other point too, that I think we should have a definitions section in the beginning of the policy, not just the committee section in the beginning of the policy. I think for things like this, there should be a section that says definitions on, to delineate what these things are.
Right.
So right away, we all know, everyone knows what we're talking about.
Yeah, for sure. All right, two more points, we're almost done. Nine, approval of benefits shall be granted by a majority vote of the committee. Said approval shall not be unreasonably denied and shall not be subject to appeal or grievance procedures. So I think.
If you can't appeal it or grieve it, how do you know it's not been unreasonably denied? Like, those two things don't go together.
Yeah, so we definitely need an appeal process.
Which kind of goes back to the HR point, right?
Yeah.
It does, yeah. Because do you, does the appeal process just go back to the committee? If you, you know, so. All right, sick leave bank benefits shall not be granted beyond the number of hours available in the bank.
And that, of course, comes to my problem, which is, if you're the unlucky one who, because somebody, there was a run on them because there was a run of bad illnesses in town, let's just say it was a COVID thing, right? And then people ran on it, like, now I'm the last person to do it, so basically.
That's sort of why I'm like, you know, as much as it's difficult to, to say what this can be used for, the, the situations of the employees that I've known that have needed to have this happen had very serious issues. This was not like, I went and had a nose job and I was out of work for a couple of weeks. I mean, that is obviously just a random example I just gave, but these were, you know, cancer, serious, serious injuries that have happened. So I would, I would hope that this wouldn't be abused and that in that situation where it did run out, say we had three awful illnesses, we did have a period of time where we had three in like a year, that we could, people could have that voluntary, additional voluntary donation, which I do think our employees will do that for each other. Not that it would always happen and I don't think we can, there's never gonna be a perfect solution here, but, um, somehow controlling the abuse of it and then, but more so, the employees having the ability to make a voluntary donation if they want to. I mean, we had an employee out, you know, and people were donating, you know, 20, 30 days to people, so.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, I don't see what the benefit is. I, I see how it's written, I agree, you can't give people more time than you have. But I do think that once the bank is empty, that it should trigger a voluntary contribution, uh, and that way employees can contribute.
Right.
Just townwide, who wants to give up some money?
I mean, to, to remember Moore's point, I mean, I wouldn't be against raising the threshold to be at some real.
A serious.
Serious issue, and of course, serious is a non-defined term. But we, you know, again.
It's gotta be some sort of qualifier, I don't know how, what that is, but.
I mean, don't we, I mean, I'm assuming that we have long-term disability here, so I mean, that we're probably saving some money if everyone's gonna be able to burn through sick, not burn through, but everyone's able to utilize sick time, which usually has a higher rate of pay because long-term disability usually decreases it by a certain percentage, usually 40 over what your normal rate is. So I mean, it's not like they're, you know, I don't want to swear, but the only phrase that comes to mind is ass out. But it's not like they're like out, you know, in an awful situation that they can't do anything if they have that long-term disability there, right?
There's just sometimes there's a gap between when it starts and, I forget how the whole process works. Isn't there a gap in between when it, for LTD? I don't know. I'm afraid there's like a, you have to be out. I, I don't want to speak out here, I thought there was some sort of weird thing that happens there, but I don't know.
But maybe there should be some reference to the interplay with, with how this affects or impacts long-term disability.
I just, I know what the intent of this is and I want it to be able to be used for that intent and, and not have.
Not abused.
I don't want to have it fail because some, you know, it's being abused.
Bad actors, yeah.
And hopefully we wouldn't have that happening, I don't, I don't.
I'm not even so, I mean, I'm concerned about fraud and abuse, obviously, but that's the easier to do. I, I'm against maybe being used casually.
That's what I'm saying.
It's not that it's abused, it's like to let it be so loose that it's always being.
Right, like if, if you're someone that takes one sick day off a month and then you're just gonna start requesting it because you ran out of sick time.
Right.
I think that, that's the kind of stuff that we need to curb, because there are people that do that.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think that's the intent of creating a sick bank. It's not because you used all 12 of your days and you use all 12 of your days.
Every year.
Every year.
Yeah.
This is for something that is a, is a serious issue and that's, and again, I don't know how we word that, but I think there needs to be something in here about it.
Can we use, I mean, the paid family medical leave must have language around qualifying events? Maybe we can use some of that language, not have paid family medical leave, but kind of use that as a guide?
Just to say, we, you know, we do have some language in here.
Yeah, we did.
We have a physician's, a letter from a physician and, you know, there's some qualifying language in here already. So I think maybe we should just read that and, you know, sort of think about whether or not it needs to be expanded or if it's covered.
And I think that maxes out 12 weeks.
Yeah, unfortunately.
What were you gonna say?
I know too, far too many instances of people getting medical doctors to sign off on stuff that, you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
That, that aren't necessarily what you would think of it as being. You know, there, so I, I think that, the, as select attorney Mckee's saying, qualifying conditions or qualifying events, I think something along that line would be helpful within the language.
Yeah, and we do, we do actually have something about that already in four. I, I do definitely need to spend some more time.
Yeah, same.
Looking at this, under benefits, benefit eligibility, number four, we did have that applicant must have a medical condition verified and documented by a physician, which requires a prolonged period of recuperation and/or absence from work. So that eliminates that one-off thing.
But it is still somewhat subjective, right?
Oh, sure. And I'm actually, I'm okay with having a little bit of subjectivity here, right? I don't want to list out a, a list of qualifying medical conditions that qualify you for this program, you know? And it just goes back to, I guess, the integrity of the committee, right? Making these decisions, so.
All right.
All right, well, that's the end of the policy, any other discussion on this tonight? I just want to say I'm really glad that we're finally reviewing this. I think this is gonna be a great addition to the town and I'm very grateful to you, Jen, and also to our HR director Julie for all the work that went into drafting it, so thank you. All right, moving on. Let's go a little slow so Amanda's back, but we have the merit award policy. So the reason that we're doing this is because, like we kind of covered already, we added it to the SAP, so it doesn't apply to union personnel. So this is essentially just copy and pasting the language of the policy pretty much into a policy so that it can be used for union personnel as well. There's no real substantial changes to the policy, it's just moving it so that it applies to.
I do want to just flag that, um, in this first year of this program, the timeline's gonna be a little bit different just based on where we are. It, it was required to be like in April.
Okay.
So, I'm soliciting, so.
Gotcha, okay. Might as well just wait for Amanda to come back. Do you want to, I don't know, do you want to speak to this a little more?
No.
Fill the gap here.
It, it, it literally is just taking, I think that the, I think that at least here, the intent, at least is in terms of how the employees were viewing it, was a little more clear that they did think that this program was going to apply across the organization.
Well, again, I, that, this one I definitely didn't think would.
Really?
No.
No. No, this is.
And by the way, in the first paragraph, under purpose, I think there needs to be on the last line, the two before the all.
Yeah, I've noticed that too. Yeah.
I'm reading it, I'm like, why am I not understanding this?
Yeah.
I, I went a second with Tom, you said, I feel very strongly that merit pay for collective bargaining unions is a, is negotiated during collective bargaining.
In this, in this particular case, I think that what was brought forward for the SAP was to basically, throw light on the fact that they're not represented and it was that contract and that plan that was inadequate for the people then. And this was an, a, a piece that we could do easily for that purpose. That's why it's in that section.
I guess, when I, when I see this, right? I hear that this, I hear what you're saying, that this was to give SAP employees a little something, but when I actually look at what we're awarding and that, like, there's gonna be a plaque somewhere and people's names are gonna go on the plaque for the three categories of communication, efficiency, and pinnacle of excellence, we will, that means we will never name the winner, regardless of the monetary value, right? Like, take the 250 out of it, but the, the winner of this award would never be anybody but the really smaller bundle of folks in the SAP. So you could be knocking it out of the park with what you're doing for transparency and you could be building out your website and you could be doing all these metrics and sharing that and you don't get to be the efficiency winner or the pinnacle of excellence winner that year. And so.
I wasn't in, I stepped out, yeah.
So we're discussing whether or not this should apply to union personnel.
So I, I think I, I probably made myself pretty clear on, on these kind of things, but I think this should be townwide.
Yeah, and I think so too. I think for a program like this to work, it has to be, all employees have to be eligible.
I think we're talking about a, a small amount of money. I think this more goes to the, to building, improving the culture. Um, just trying to do, do something for employees, just recognizing their, their work. Personally, I don't think these should have been under the SAP, either of these, at all. I know that's how they were presented. They're still relatively new to the board, I'm still learning every single time I sit, every day I sit here, but I personally feel that this should be across the board.
Well, maybe the way around it, to bridge the divide here is that, um, you know, to add that applicability is for unions that have adopted in their contract, special merit pay. That, you know, we can negotiate this, we can make a policy that applies to the unions that have adopted it and then when we engage in collective bargaining, we can adopt, they can adopt it. But I think it's a, it's a, to me, when you start talking about merit pay on unions, it, to me, it is a union negotiation. That in exchange for, you know, you know, us offering this special merit pay, that there's, it's part of what the full benefit package is.
I wish I could unhinge the dollars.
Pay with the actual program.
And first of all, I don't think that the $250, like, this is not, it's not about the pay, right? Like, it's not making or breaking it. I wish I could unhinge the money from the, making the award, and maybe that's what we can do, right?
Yeah. Why can't we do that?
That if, if you happen to be an SAP employee and you get this award this year, you get the 250 bucks. If you're not an SAP employee, you get the award. Because I really, I think that the honor of being recognized for your work, to me as an employee, that's more than the $250.
For sure, I completely agree. And a program like this doesn't work if it's not going to be townwide.
Well, I think it does. The way to really correct this, of course, is to, at special town meeting in the fall, remove these from the SAP and just make them policies of, of the town.
Right.
Which I think you and I both said, that we had the authority to make these as policies and they.
Well, I, yeah, I, I recall being alone in my objection to the whole SAP debacle, which I still think is a debacle and here's reasons why I think it's a debacle. You know, we didn't have any method and didn't think the things out. And, you know, unfortunately, again, the whole idea of addressing the SAP was for deficiencies in the employees covered by the SAP. And so the whole merit thing was like, this is for them.
Correct.
So where are we at? Who, who feels strongly that this should only apply to SAP employees?
Well, I, I mean, I.
That doesn't make sense.
I don't know if that was quite where my position was as much as it was.
Seems like that's where the conversation.
That's what the language is. I, my position is it should be for everybody.
Okay.
Yeah.
My position is that the language that was passed in the SAP didn't lead to that.
Right, now we have to fix the SAP.
Right.
But why can't we adopt a policy regardless of what it said?
Well, because I think that what, you know, Vice Chair Jeffrey said, is that these are, well, he said it while you were just here, is that, that these are things that you negotiate with, with towns. I mean, again, if you decouple the recognition from the money.
I think what, what we're actually talking about passing, sorry, I cut you off.
What did you say in here then?
I, I just apologize for cutting him off. I don't really view this as a merit. $250, to me, is like, maybe that's what some towns do, but to me, this is more the, it's a recognition policy. It's a recognition, it's not really merit, in my opinion. Merit is usually larger than $250. But, I don't know.
I definitely support town, I mean, you know, the thing is, we're calling them special merit awards. And, and based on the fact that the SAP has it now in their rules, that I think the expectation is that the SAP will be eligible for all of these different categories. So if we are not making, you know, awarding, you know, these different categories or different things to, if someone in the SAP doesn't get it, then are we, are we really complying at that point, you know? But I do think it should be townwide for the recognitions, I feel very strongly about this, I've said this several times. But when it comes to the money, the money to me is a separate thing that is part of the union negotiation.
It should just be employee recognition award.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Employee recognition award.
Across town, no money, done.
Yeah.
I mean, doesn't have to be complicated.
So, let me scroll down here, I'm trying to find.
The dollar.
Where's the actual dollar in here? I don't see it, it's not in here.
It's at the very end.
It has to be somewhere.
It is, it is in the.
Page two.
Nominations.
Oh, there it is, two, okay. Caught off the actual dollars there. Okay, so that part of it, all recipients will be publicly recognized for their accomplishment and have a letter of commendation placed in their personnel file in addition to their one-time award of $250. So do we want to add language here that just specified that, that is only for SAP employees? Is that where we're getting at here?
Yep, that's where I'm at.
Well, it's gonna be hard to navigate that.
Yeah.
So somebody else gets the award.
Until it can be modified.
But they don't get anything, but somebody else who didn't win the award gets $250.
Or, and collective bargaining units that have adopted.
Could I, could I ask a question? What happened, what would happen if we just, so the policy, this is a personnel policy, right? It doesn't have the weight of charter or bylaw of the general bylaws.
Wait, are we talking about this new policy or are we talking about SAP?
SAP, right? It doesn't, it doesn't have the same weight as the charter, it doesn't have the same weight, a personnel bylaw doesn't have the same weight as the general bylaws. The AG doesn't approve them. What if we don't follow our own pol, or just saying aloud, what if we don't follow our own policy for this year? And we don't start this program until we get it out of the SAP in the special town meeting in the fall?
I think, I'm gonna jump in here right away. Last summer, we did something that was not necessarily to the letter of our policies and I think that the response back from the members who were not in the slim majority there was overwhelming. And I do not think it's wise for us to, with eyes wide open, not comply.
Yeah, I definitely don't want to not do this. Yeah, I definitely don't want to not do this, I mean, a lot went into this, we did it in the fall at special town meeting, we have the opportunity to fine tune it here, but to say that we're just not gonna do it, while we're fine tuning it is probably isn't what I would say.
It's just the money piece.
How much can we fine tune it here?
Yeah, I know.
How much are we allowed to actually fine tune it here? That's my question, as opposed to taking it back, the fall town meeting, to do it the way we're discussing now.
Well, I think we're fine tuning, though, the fine tuning is deciding how much of it applies to non-union personnel and the policy that we're looking at here that we're implementing, right? Like, that's, that's really the question here.
But can we fine tune to take the money award out?
Yes.
Now?
You could.
And just make it an employee recognition award, and you you get a, you know?
No, in the article, it says.
Well, it's it'll still be given to SAP employees because it's in bylaw.
So, without taking it out of the bylaw, we can't take the money out.
Right, so you could take, you could, you could say, you, because you're SAP, you get the $250, but you can also, you who's not SAP, you could win this award, but there's no monetary.
Right, so like I said, the fine tuning.
Until you negotiate it.
The fine tuning is deciding whether or not the union.
I mean, everyone's up in the next one or two years anyway, so I mean, it's only gonna be a temporary disconnect that we won't get ourselves out of.
But then, is it opening it up for everyone and every union thinks that they're gonna, we would have to add language somewhere in here that says that the awards are only townwide, it's not one award per each bargaining unit or per the.
I don't think that would be a concern as of right now, anyway, would it?
Not right now, but if each unit is getting it in, because that was the point that got brought up, if, say, someone in in, you know, DPDW got the award, but didn't get the money, would the money then go to, would there be two people that year?
No, so is the town manager shall make no more than one award in each of the three categories, and the town manager shall make all determinations regarding the nominees and may decline to grant an award in a particular category, so, um, if there's not a strong applicant, right, we're not just gonna give it away.
Right.
Hmm.
Well, if you're looking in a way to get, I mean, if I if I was gonna set this right, I would say that you do something that's just as it is right now written for SAP, only for SAP for this year, and then say, in the town meeting, you take, in the special town meeting, you propose taking that out of SAP and making it a townwide thing.
Yeah, I think that might actually.
Because that's how it was passed, right? That's the letter of how it was passed.
Which is not, not, this year alone.
Which is not, at least, my understanding of what the intent was, but that is what we passed, which is why we should have reviewed it more and and that whole.
So I would, that that would be the way to get out of it, with following what we said, and then realize that it had unintended consequences of what we wanted, and have to go back and rearrange.
We talked about it. But at fall town meeting, that this was not so simple.
And nothing.
Well, I would argue that it's good that we have this, and yes, we can work out the issues as we go, and we can iterate on it, you know, I'm not gonna say that it was a mistake to pass this, so.
So this also says may annually make, the town, and I'm reading the article, not the policy, in addition to any pay increases which may be awarded to an employee, the town manager may annually make a one-time award. So in theory, we don't have to do this this year. Do we even have the money to do this this year?
We do.
Okay, so then, then I think if we are going to do it this year, then it should just be SAP, and then I do think we need to get this on the special town meeting.
To remove it.
To remove it from the SAP.
To make it a townwide policy, in my opinion. I don't think they they should have to negotiate over this, but that's just my personal opinion.
All right. Other members agree? Renee shaking her head?
Yeah.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, Michael Ray?
Yes.
Okay. All right, sounds good.
Nothing stops Jen from being able to.
Right.
Propose to us that someone who's in a collective bargaining union should be recognized by the select board in a way that is very similar to how the SAP is recognized.
Yeah.
And I would have to imagine that, you know, we have a $50 limit, right, that if we needed to raise, you know, a couple hundred bucks, that we could easily do it.
All right, well, thank you very much for putting this together, too. Moving on, we have a discussion on acceptance of gift policy. So the reason that this is here is because a gift came up, which you'll also see on the agenda, um, and there was some confusion about how to handle it and whether or not the select board had to approve it, uh, what gifts the select board actually does approve, uh, and it's pretty clear, according to statute, that we approve pretty much everything. Uh, so this policy is pretty much, uh, being put into writing as an explicit guide, uh, for staff to follow, and the public as well. Is that a fair representation?
Yes, and, um.
Didn't we already have one? We didn't have a gift policy?
I thought we did.
I thought we did, I thought we did one.
If you did, it's not.
It's not its own standing policy.
It's not in, it's not in the policy book, so if you did, it's not in the policy book.
Because I looked for it, too.
Um, and I've I've searched for gifts, but, um, this I did borrow from largely from Southampton and a little bit of Lancaster, um, but I looked at quite a few gift policies, and, uh, Southampton had the best one that was just, um, I think covered the whole thing.
All right, so we we should really just like go through this, so I'm gonna start reading through it. All right, gift policy, purpose and application. One, this policy establishes procedures for the acceptance of gifts to the town of Lunenburg. Two, the Lunenburg Select Board appreciates gifts of offers of gifts, donations, and bequests, and views charitable giving as valuable to the town's well-being and future. Three, the purpose of this policy is to develop uniform standards for the acceptance of grants and gifts, so as to ensure that the intent of the donors can be carried out in an efficient and consistent manner. Four, this policy policy shall apply to all gifts of personal property, services, and money given to the town of Lunenburg or any of its departments, provided that this policy shall not apply to the following. A, gifts of real estate. B, gifts for educational or school-related purposes. C, gifts to the Board of Library Trustees. D, gifts to any other trusts established in accordance with general law, chapter 41, section 45 and 47. Out of curiosity, why is it not MGL? Is it actually?
You can use GL or MGL relatively interchangeably.
I always see MGL, but that's okay. Or E, gifts to individual employees or groups of employees for their own personal use. Note that gifts to individual employees may only be accepted in accordance with the Massachusetts Conflict of Interest Law and shall not exceed $50 in value. So I'm gonna pause there for a minute. Anything so far?
Nothing other than, I would like it to be MGL, just.
Yeah, me, too.
It's just a super nitpicky, silly, silly thing. I have seen it both ways, but I like I like MGL.
Me, too.
I think that's also how we use it pretty consistently in Lunenburg, we're just like keeping things.
Yeah.
Consistent.
All right, I'll continue. Five, any gift or donation not subject to this policy shall be administered in accordance with applicable law, policies and procedures of the recipient, and/or any terms or conditions imposed by the donor. Town meeting approval may be required. Six, the town shall recognize any gift accepted under this policy in writing by thanking the donor within 30 days of the acceptance of any gift by the town manager or select board. Definitions, gift or donation, the term quote gift and quote donation shall be synonymous and may be a contribution of money, securities, tangible pro- personal property, equipment, goods, or services that the town accepts and for which the donor does not receive anything in return.
So, we've talked in the past about people naming things after other folks, and I generally don't have a conflict if, you know, a board decides to give someone the ultimate honor and do that, but I do think it could be problematic if someone's giving a gift that, you know, and it's, you know, it says does not receive anything in return, but I I think we may want to spell out that, you know, you can't give, maybe we do want to do it, but may, you know, do we want to allow people to say, hey, I'll give $50,000 if we renovate this room and it gets named after me?
No, that would be getting something in return.
Yeah.
Or name it after my mother.
Still getting something in return.
Right.
Some communities do have a naming policy specifically for that.
Oh, the school does.
So do we, do we want to, while I agree with you, Tom, that that is getting something in return, I wonder if a future board would say, well, they're not actually getting anything.
They are. If you're saying, I'll do this if you, the if you part is the something in return.
I think we should have a naming policy, and then we should think about how it ties in with this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Personally, because I don't think we should tell boards and committees that they can't do that if they so choose to do that.
Or I'll donate this thing, but I want the bottom of it to say donated by.
Well, yeah.
I think, I would hope, and I know that that is, that does happen, but if a committee wanted to honor someone or a family or something, I don't want it all of a sudden be like, you can't, because they donated to you and now you, you know, even if, even if the the donor is isn't asking, I, can you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I I agree with you, I see where you're going.
Yeah, I know.
All right, we can think about this. All right, we'll keep going. Gift acceptance authority. So, one, in accordance with MGL, chapter 44, section 53A, any board or officer of the town has the authority to accept gifts or donations of funds on behalf of the town of Lunenburg.
I think or officer is a problem.
Okay.
Because.
But is that from the state law?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it seems like it is, I mean, one cited right there.
If that's a state law, then.
So how do you?
But we can be stronger then.
Yep.
Right, true.
So I I think or officer is a little problematic, because, I mean, that means that, I mean, technically, we're all officers, right?
I don't know who, I don't know who's, I have to read 44.
Right, yeah, I was gonna say.
Section, chapter 44, section 53A.
Yeah, make a note of it.
Okay.
So when you, when you, do you want to kind of look at it, it is in the, for later? They're dropped in there for you.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay, yeah, we'll read through all that. Two, MGL, chapter 44, section 53A, also provides for, A, depositive gift funds in a special account by the town treasurer, B, expenditures of funds for the specific purpose of the gift without town meeting appropriation, subject to the approval of the select board. And that's it. Three, in accordance with MGL, chapter 44, section 53A and a half, the select board has the authority to accept gifts or donations of tangible personal property on behalf of the town. Okay. Gift acceptance process. One.
So hold on a second. What what is, I I guess, again, we'll we'll look at 53A, I don't understand the difference between number one and then number three.
So 53A is cash donations?
Okay.
And A and a half is tangible things.
Okay.
So it could be a vehicle, it could be a bench, it's a thing.
Right.
Okay, so number one, when we talk about officers, so anybody can accept, oh, on behalf of, so what is that, money?
Cash.
Cash, yeah.
Yeah, no.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
Because then in three, it just says the select board has the authority to accept.
Right.
Donations of tangible personal property. So it's an interesting distinction.
And again, because somebody can be given something, I think that's replies to, well, anyway, it says on behalf of the town, so that's not true, I take it back. Okay.
All right, so I just read three, right? Yes. Gift acceptance process. So one, offer, all gifts or offers of gifts shall be accompanied by a letter or electronic communication from the donor indicating the offer, its monetary value, if there is any intended purpose for the gift, and any restrictions on the use of the gift.
Wait, but what if it, they want to be an anonymous donor?
That's further.
Right. Oh, it's further down, okay. Two.
I didn't read this one before we.
Yeah, I I didn't get too far on this one either. Two, review slash recommendation. Gifts offered to one of these town entities will first be reviewed by the entity, and a recommendation will be forwarded for approval to the select board, if the gift has a value of $500 or more, or the town manager, if the gift has a value of less than $500 for final determination. What do you think of that part?
I'm fine with it.
Michael Ray? Did you have something you were gonna say?
Yeah, I mean, what, I don't have a, I don't have a conflict, I'm just looking at additional things.
Okay.
You know, because I want, what makes me worry a little bit is if, um, someone says, you know, hey, town manager, you know, I'm gonna make this donation to the town, it's gonna be for 450 bucks, oh, yeah, and let's talk about what I came here to meet with you with, you know what I mean? Like, it it almost facilitates a bribe, right? And so, I mean, obviously, the town manager's not gonna accept a bribe, um, but how do we make this a little stronger, so that way it has to be a little more.
Well, I guess I would.
Anonymous gifts maybe are excluded from me, excepted by the town manager.
I would just extend this, like, what difference does, like, the potential for the town manager to be bribed than the select board?
Over five people.
Is it that we're five people? I mean.
It's the, it's, I I think what Mr. Jeffrey's is getting at is that that potentially could be a meeting in my office versus something where we are reading.
Out here in public.
Out here in public, in a public meeting.
Yeah, I can see that.
And and I do not have any concern if you want to say that you're approving all gifts, that's fine to say, not to break up, I I just, the the break between the 500 is just for administrative convenience.
Convenience.
But if the board wants to be viewing all gifts and accepting all gifts, I am 100% in support of that.
Yeah.
How often do we get gifts?
So, I think that when this policy is distributed, you'll be accepting more gift acceptances.
I think people just don't know the select board's supposed to vote to accept them.
Yes.
So I think there's a lot of gifts that we don't know about, because people just don't know, it needs to come before us, so.
No, no, that's true, but.
No.
Because the body who, the people who are accepting the gifts would know, should know.
Should know, yeah.
Now, there may be some distance to the craps, but I don't think there's.
Just a thought, that's all.
And as far as this, the town manager, I mean, if if a town manager is is unethical enough to, for $500 jeopardize his or her job for $500.
No, seriously. I mean, is there some sort of reporting here? Did I miss it? Like, are you gonna be reporting to us?
I I think my comment here was not about the town, the town manager getting bribed as much as it's on the other end of it, it's someone feeling as if, you know, now they have the opportunity to kind of grease the wheels a a bit, not, obviously, you know, no town manager's losing their job over 500 bucks.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's kind of silly, but but doesn't incentivize a bad actor here.
Yeah.
So there is a pro, so, um, all, to your question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
All, um, turnovers of all types of funds are recorded by the treasurer or collector.
Okay, and that could help alleviate that concern, but we can think about that.
So, is there anything, why is there a cemetery with a one superscript?
So, um, there's, um, a separate statute that applies to certain types of donations or funds to the cemetery that are specifically covered under another, um, section of the general law.
Okay.
Um, so they are exempt from this process.
I think Ms. Emke is asking that, because I don't see.
I don't see the.
Oh, you don't see it?
Yeah.
On my version, I'm seeing it.
I don't, okay. I don't see it on mine.
Are you not in the maybe full app?
Yeah, she's on a laptop, just like I am.
If you go to.
I'm not in the app, and so I don't see it either. I'm just.
Open in desktop?
Oh, okay, let me open it in desktop, let me try that.
Oh, that's weird, I see it.
Yeah.
So it says, just while you're pulling it up, gifts, gifts bestowed bestowed to the So it says, just while you're pulling it up, gifts, gifts bestowed, bestowed to the cemetery division for the perpetual care are exempt from MGL, chapter forty-four, and shall be kept in a separate fund where applicable, as governed by MGL, chapter one fourteen, section twenty-five.
I can't open it, because office requires licenses and accounts for everything, and you can't just open a document anymore.
The subscribe.
I'm in the browser and I don't, yeah, I don't.
Yeah, I don't see it either in the browser.
Okay.
That's weird.
Okay, well, it's there, so we can just look at that.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so let's move on.
Dream, dream job.
Do you guys need me to read this table? Are we?
No.
Any comments?
No.
No.
Three, determination. Upon receipt of a recommendation by the head of the receiving department, the select board for gifts valued at five hundred dollars or more, or the town manager for gifts valued less than five hundred, will determine whether the gift is appropriate for the mission and needs of the town, and whether the gift should be accepted, accepted with conditions, or rejected. Four, right to reject. Notwithstanding anything in this policy to the contrary, the town has the right to reject any gifts or donation, any gift or donation for any reason or no reason at all.
Well, that's kind of redundant, but I think that's funny.
Yeah. Five, final disposition. The donor will be notified in writing of the select board or town manager's decision. If the gift is rejected, any funds or property already received by the town will be promptly returned to the donor. Six, valuation. Monetary gifts shall be at face value. Ongoing or frequent gifts from the same donor and for the same purpose may be assigned the total value of all the gifts expected within the same fiscal year, for the purpose of determining whether the gift requires approval of the select board, because the total value is five hundred or more. The town reserves the right to assign such value to an item of tangible personal property as it deems appropriate, provided that it may require an appraisal for gifts of tangible personal property, if the town cannot assign a value to a gift. The donor is responsible for obtaining an independent appraisal of the item. Seven, record of receipt. Upon acceptance of a gift, the town manager will provide a completed gift acceptance receipt, receipt to the donor and will be copied to the town treasurer. Conditions of acceptance. Upon acceptance of any donation by the town, the donor shall relinquish all rights, ownership, or control over the donated property or funds, except as set forth in the terms of the donation, and any gifts given to the town shall not be refunded to the donor under any circumstances after acceptance, in accordance with this policy. Nine, expenditures. No expenditures or gifted funds shall be permitted until the town manager or select board have accepted the gift in the manner deemed appropriate by this policy. All expenditures of gifted funds must be made through the town's financial policies and are subject to the town's purchasing regulations and accounts payable slash warrant processing procedures. Okay. Gift acceptance criteria. One, in determining whether to accept a gift, the select board or town manager may consider whether, A, the gift is appropriate to the mission and needs of the town; B, use of the gift is restricted or unrestricted; C, the gift is irrevocable; D, future financial impact on the town would result from the gift, including ongoing operations, maintenance, or capital costs; E, the gift terms permit the town to apply the gift to another purpose, should the original intent become impractical; F, terms proposed by the donor are in the town's interest; G, accepting the gift is in conflict with any town policy or any applicable state, federal, or local law. Solicitation and voluntariness of gifts. Is that a word, voluntariness?
It is now.
Okay. One, no solicitation of funds or donations may be undertaken by any party on behalf of the town without prior approval of the select board. Two, gifts of the town are to be voluntary or not to be given in lieu of payments, fees, or services otherwise due to the town.
All right, if we can pause.
I was just gonna say, I feel like our eyes are bleating over here with policy.
Nope, these are all, it's just well-written.
Okay, good.
The only conflict is number one. Um, you know, I, I, I'm aware that there's already a group out there that's a nonprofit that's soliciting donations on behalf of the school without any kind of cosigning, uh, from the school.
Yeah, and it's not just schools.
Yeah, and I think that in situations like this, I mean, you know, someone's trying to, you know, let's think of the skate park kids, right? Who've been raising money for a while, and technically, the town is going to benefit from them having one town property.
Right.
Um, you know, in that case, y- y- yes, we have in large part endorsed it, but I do think there's opportunity here for the community to come together and, and try to raise money for different things, and, and, and to be supportive to the town, and I don't know if it's wise to.
Require a vote of the select board to allow that, and also what happens to groups that are already doing it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they're not doing it on behalf of the town. There's a difference between fundraising and asking for gifts. This is a gift policy.
Sure.
I mean, the skate park, to use that example, only because it was brought up, is like, a group who is raising money to build a skate park. And we're not, the town hasn't authorized them, that we're allowing them to do it, because they're gonna provide money to build the skate park.
Yeah.
But as an example, like, let's think of the Marshall Park project, and, I mean, you obviously want it to happen, but, I mean, if someone out there says, hey, I wanna reach out to, you know, all the earth removers in town and, and adjacent type folks, and see if I can coordinate with them to see if they can be willing to donate a certain amount of materials and et cetera. That, you know, should that be done with the explicit kind of consent of a select board, or could someone come here in a public comment one day and say, hey, I've coordinated this, I've done this, we're willing to offer the town, you know, half million dollars in material for X, Y, and Z. To me, I think that we should be open to allowing those kinds of things to happen.
Yeah, there's a difference between somebody saying, I know somebody who's in that business, and we'll try to, I'll try to get them to do it, as long as we don't bless it or say anything, we're not condoning it, that people can ask people what they want.
So you differentiate then in the fundraising.
Fundraising and acceptance of the gift.
Right, I mean, if somebody, if somebody says, I have a friend who was, who can do X and provide those services for a project, like has happened, and they come forward and they say, yeah, I'm willing to give it to the town, plus the select board and elected members of the town didn't openly on the air say, hey, listen, if anybody's out there, and you wanna give a gift, we'd really appreciate it, like, that's a usually different issue. It's kinda like, it's kinda like the difference of why you can't campaign.
Right.
In public meetings and things like that, so.
Yeah, unless you do it in public comments.
You're not even that.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I know, Tom.
Well, anyway, I'm, I'm not gonna start that side, no. Okay, yeah.
I don't have any problem with number one, because I think it's, it's who's doing the asking. Obviously, people can ask people they know, as long as it's not required, as long as we didn't commission somebody or charge somebody to do that.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying, though, cause what if you are on a board and you're, you're talking to your friends and then, you know.
Which happens a lot, right? There are a lot of people who are involved in that sort of work, who happen to be on boards that may or may not.
Could we run that one by town council?
Cause like, you get the, you, you have the, the, uh, farming, not the farming, the, the gardening group that does the kind of center of town, you have the lights that kinda happen every Christmas time. I mean, I think in many ways, those are, those are gifts.
Well, what's the gift, though? We're using, that's already town property for, well.
Uh, I'm, if, if we go back to the, if we go back to the park, the park thing.
Yeah.
I'm not saying they're doing this, but say, you know, somebody that's on the park commission knows somebody from Powell's, and, and it's like, hey, do you have anything that you wanna donate? And they do, this wouldn't allow them to do that, unless we gave them the authority to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
Essentially, right, yeah.
And I don't, I think in our community, where a lot of times these companies do support us, I think that we wouldn't wanna not allow that. I mean, I know, I know there's a hair, there's a, there's a line there, but maybe we can get some advice from council on that one, in my opinion.
Yeah, we can think about that a little more. All right, we're almost done. Reporting slash record keeping. One, all gift of funds, all gifts of funds donated to the town shall be accounted for in accordance with applicable laws and standard accounting and record keeping procedures. Two, revenue turnovers. The head of each department that receives grants or donations of funds shall turn said funds over to the treasurer in accordance with the town's financial management policies and procedures. Anonymous slash confidential donations. In certain situations, a donor may prefer to make a confidential or anonymous donation to the town. Town manager may evaluate the type of gift and is authorized to accept it on behalf of the town without public notification of the donor's name, as long as all of the requirements are satisfied and to the extent permitted by law.
I think.
So this is, the only reason this is problematic is if it's over five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
In the, in this policy, then the town manager doesn't have the authority to accept it.
Right.
And I should say something about the select board, we can accept anonymous donations as well.
But I also think this goes directly against, I can't find it right now, because my brain is tired. When I brought it up, and I sa- it said, they have to give their name.
Right.
And I know that this is trying to address that, but I think it needs to be somewhere in the same point, cause this, this completely contradicts the other thing that says they have to give their name.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I don't even remember where, I don't even remember where it was.
Very beginning about they have to do it in writing and something.
I just know I said, I was like, wait, what?
Okay, we can just, we can rework that. Okay, and then last one, donor tax impact. Gifts to the town may be deductible from the donor's federal income tax if the gift is intended solely for, quote, "public purposes," as it says tax day. Donors are encouraged to consult with a tax professional if there are any questions concerning the taxable status of a donation.
I wonder if that first sentence is already giving tax advice.
Yeah.
Maybe just in the section where we talk about the, um, get receipt, that there could be just language added in there, um, about it, cause, you know.
Yeah, we can't give tax, do you wanna just get rid of it?
First sentence.
Yeah, do we have to give any?
Just donors are encouraged to consult with tax professional?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's fine, yeah. Okay.
I didn't have any problem with the first sentence.
Yeah. All right, any other discussion on this tonight? All right, thank you for doing this, too.
Yeah, this was a lot of, of work that you put forth.
Thank you.
Well, I am gonna thank Southampton again.
I was gonna say.
But I did have to search.
Researchers work too.
I did have to research a lot of communities before I found one that I liked, so.
Right, right.
You know?
Why recreate the wheel? I know, I'm a big fan of.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion on this? All right, perfect segue. Acceptance of cash gift from Peter and Deborah Lincoln for the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center. So the Lincolns donated six thousand nine hundred dollars for shades at the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center. This is where some of the confusion came up among staff. Um, the blinds, the shades are already installed. So we are sort of retroactively doing this vote to accept it.
But how can we vote on this if we don't have a policy? Do we still just?
No, you, no, you, you could always have, you always could accept under MGL, chapter forty-four.
We've accepted many gifts in this.
I'm sorry, I am.
That's okay.
Nope, that's okay.
My brain is not here anymore.
And I also.
And that gift wasn't solicited or?
No, it was not solicited.
Um, and I also just wanna thank the Lincolns for doing this. I mean, I really, I think it really says a lot about our volunteers and the leadership that we have in town among community members, that people are willing to do this, so.
I agree.
You're here.
Great. Thank you, Devin, Pete.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so is there a motion to accept the cash donation of six thousand nine hundred dollars from, uh, Deb and Pete Lincoln for the installation of blinds at the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center? And we can also add this in accordance with MGL, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three A.
So moved. Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much.
All right, let's make sure we get them something in writing if possible.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we, yeah, okay.
Let's pretend we have a policy and we're following it.
Yep.
Okay. And then the last thing is a discussion on updated charge for budget task force. We have to get this going up again. Uh, so I just wanted to remind people, here's the charge, let's review it if we wanna make any changes. One thing that I do wanna ask members about and have us start thinking about, um, there, at least for me, I've received, um, a lot of interest among community members for community representation. So I really want us to consider if we would like to add, um, like, at-large community member seats to the budget task force, cause there's a number of people who have expressed interest, and this is something I hear about almost every week, for like, the past month. So that's really the one thing that I wanted to pose to members tonight for, uh, any changes to the charge. But if there are other changes too that members wanna make at some point, doesn't have to be tonight, obviously, I just want us to start thinking about it.
Yeah, I, I broadly speaking, I really want to encourage volunteerism and not advocacy, and I think that there's a difference. And so, you know, while I, you know, municipal design, we have members at large, there's a huge value that they add into it, but I think that there is greater value in, in, in this case, in, in adding in things like personnel committee members, and maybe we'll get someone on the personnel committee. Um, but I do think it's helpful to, to maybe pinpoint here a couple of, of committees, so that way we can help encourage participation on those committees, cause we need the whole government to work, not just the parts that people have a, a specific hope for. I mean, the analogy is like pulling the rope, right? We're all in this together, but we can't just be okay when, when we're pulling the rope and we're the ones on the other side getting pulled, and, and, and it's something that we want, and then when someone else needs to get that pull, that we just let go and hands up, it doesn't apply to me, doesn't benefit me. So I just wanna encourage the rope pulling here, that it's not just self-seeking, that it's for the benefit of us all.
I completely hear that.
Sorry.
No, go ahead, you can go first.
My only thought was when you brought up the personnel committee, and having sat on the, still sitting on the master plan steering committee, I do not think we should put any open seats on a committee that does not, is not filled, cause that's gonna affect quorum issues, especially if we do decide to make this larger. I don't, I wouldn't, not that I wouldn't support the personnel committee being on here, I think that would be great, but we don't have one, and I certainly wouldn't wanna put a spot for a committee that is vacant. Sorry, that was just one side note from what you just said.
Yeah, that's fair. Renee, how about you? You were on the budget task force, you wrote the charge, what do you think?
So some towns do have, have one or two members at large. Um, it gets fairly big. And it makes it hard to get things done. It's counterintuitive, but big meetings tend to be less effective.
It's effective and really hard to schedule, again.
That, the logistics of this.
And we can't just add one, we'd have to add two.
And then what's the process of doing it?
Yep, that's another question. How do you apply, you know, we'd have to come, they'd have to come before us, yeah.
I think, but the, you know, these are also public meetings, so the public can still go and participate. Yep, um, I guess it, right now, based on what we just said, I wouldn't support expanding it personally. Not that I don't support people being involved, they absolutely should be involved, but I think making larger committees, especially when we're struggling so much to fill our current vacancies, doesn't make sense. It's gonna just continue these quorum issues, and I think maybe I am tainted from the master plan steering issues that we've had, but having larger committees, it's, it's so hard.
Cause there's already, I think, seven, right?
It's already seven.
So we'll go up to nine.
We have to go to nine.
That would be.
It would be five.
That's a lot.
It is, yeah.
Becomes unwieldy.
I think large committees are unwieldy, and they're, you reach a peak of diminishing returns. Seven is like the largest, I believe you can go. And the only other issue, well, one of the issues I have with, with the task force is the fact that there are four people on here, the last four men, named in the membership, that are going, that, that have access to all the data. So the, the task force, without the town manager, the superintendent, the finance director, is absolutely dead in the water, cause they had, don't have access to any data.
Yep.
The question is, do you want, as a voting member, do you want the town manager, the superintendent, and everything to be voting members? Now, that might be something that you want to supplant. You wanna say, well, let's make it a five-member board, and then those last four are people who provide information.
Ad hoc.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, cause what was it, four members of it are employees, so there's three that are.
Right, and they're all, and they're all elec- two elected and one appointed.
Right, so that's a really good point, too, so.
So you could replace two people with citizens.
Yep.
And then ask the, you know, then the, the ex officio members, but non-voting, cause they'll be providing the framework that people will be evaluating. Obviously, they're gonna be asked their opinion, and they should be asked their opinion.
Of course.
But they won't be voting members.
Yeah, I, I could support that.
I think what I would also wanna be mindful of is, you know, length of meetings, right? I mean, town manager already has several meetings she has to attend at night, same thing with the superintendent, same thing with the finance director, and, you know, to the earlier comment, you know, when you start really expanding upon, uh, this group, you know, you're expanding upon the length of time that these meetings will be going on as well.
Yeah.
Well, I think that, I mean, now we're getting into the task force own work, but I would say that being mindful of what Mr. Jeffries just said, I would say that they should be, the, the attendance of those four employees should not be mandatory at every meeting, and the task force should ask for what they want, and then those meetings where they need explanation more, then schedule it. But I wouldn't expect that the task force should need to have those four employees every meeting.
And this could be a way to sort of alleviate that burden that's placed on staff, too.
Yeah. Need them, because you don't need them till you need them, and if they're not there, then the meeting's kinda useless.
Okay. Yeah, I've, I've long stood, I've long said to every town manager I've worked with, that they don't need to be at every finance committee meeting either. It's like, pick and choose, I mean, it, it's not, you know, the town manager has to be at our meeting, that's like by charter and everything. But otherwise, the, the person in the seat gets pulled in a million directions and starts working sixty-hour weeks, and that never ends up well.
Yeah.
Can I ask the town manager how she feels about this committee? Do you have a strong opinion?
So I do have a strong opinion that I'd like to see the budget task force recharged. Um, I think that there's a lot of work that the budget task force could assist us with, um, you know, help us do our jobs. I do not see the need for any of the, um, employees being voting members. I think that we could totally swap out any or all of those votes. Um, I think that my, my only concern with adding new people is that there is a very steep learning curve, that I think those that were on the budget task force in watching some of those meetings, I saw that evolution happen, right? You are, you became subject matter experts, to an extent at the end, and I think if you're gonna have somebody who, while they want to participate, doesn't understand the basics of how municipal finance works, um, it's gonna be an uphill battle, and we won't be able to accomplish as much as we want to accomplish. So I, that's my concern there with adding, adding voices. I think that that's fine, as long as we make sure that those folks have some threshold understanding.
Well, we can interview, I mean.
Right.
This body will, the, the, if there are citizens at large.
We decide.
We, we would appoint them, and we could say, interview them.
Well, I also just heard his member, MK, is definitely still going to be on the budget.
I don't, I don't know where, I didn't.
I was gonna comment on that.
I was gonna comment.
She was saying that.
No, no, my comment is, there's gonna be turnover on this committee. Because.
No?
Fi- yeah, you laugh.
There could be.
Finance committee, we lo- we lost.
Evan.
Evan, in September. I don't know if Tony's going to still represent schools.
Right, you never know what's gonna happen.
We have a new superintendent. Um, you're not, you're not new anymore, sorry.
You're not new anymore?
The school director of administrat- I don't know if that, they're talking about, I don't know what they're, I don't know what is happening there. So. And Amanda's gonna be on here now.
Whoa. We could have two select board members, that is possible.
Yeah.
Sure, it is.
And I think, I think what you're, to your point, town manager, you know, it is a learning curve, to, to be able to engage in a conversation, you know, broadly speaking. That's why I said it may be beneficial to pick committee members, because, you know, we hear this stuff all the time. You know, you're talking with members of the public, sometimes they don't, um, you know, it's hard for people to learn the basics, um, and it takes a while to learn it. So I, I, anyway, I do see value, um, but I, I'm, we're not looking to make a decision here.
No, we're not. So I was gonna end it there anyway, so, you know, just think about it, and we can pick this up later.
But we should be ready to go right after.
Oh, yeah.
Town meeting.
Absolutely. That's why we're picking this up now, so we can, you know, have a full month to.
The week after. The week after town meeting.
I know this is our, our subcommittee, but is there value to checking in with, you know, the school committee or the, the FinCom to see if they had any suggestions on what should, what should be included on the budget task force?
Yeah, we could do that.
Just a thought, I say, I'm happy.
Yeah, why not? There's, there were, those committees are represented. There's, those committees are represented, so they can weigh in, for sure. All right, any other discussion on that tonight? All right, moving on to old business, discussion on 56 car, have seller hold. So we left this off in February. I think we were of the opinion that we wanted an appraisal, and we were holding off until April when the weather was nicer, nicer, so that we could do that. Despite the five inches of snow that we got a couple days ago, it seems to all be gone now. Today, it actually felt like spring, so are we still interested in getting this appraised?
I haven't changed my opinion.
Yeah, I haven't either. So yes from Renee? Michael Ray?
Is that what we said before? I don't even remember.
What'd you say?
That was what we agreed to before, right?
No, I'm like, trying to look and remember, refresh myself, but yeah.
Yeah.
This has been around for a while.
We also were talking about ourselves just getting out there, and I don't know if this will be a formal site visit, just feel to go out there and take a look.
Yeah, I'd be interested in doing that. We can probably coordinate some sort of sidewalk if more members wanted to go. Is that something you'd be interested in?
I would go.
Oh, I, I would be more, I know my schedule over the next coming weeks, and I know I can't commit a Saturday morning, but I can certainly get out there myself. But it doesn't want to preclude the rest of the board from agreeing to meet at all.
Well, I could say that perhaps we could figure out on our own if we are interested in work with the town manager to make that happen, on our own.
Well, you may also want to wait until after the election. That way, you'll have two new members, and so it might be a better way to get them in instead of bringing them in the middle.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
As an example, so.
So, all right, it sounds like we all want to get this appraised. What should we do to formalize that? Do we?
So I can, I can proceed with getting it appraised, and then you can decide on next steps.
All right, great. We don't need to vote on that or anything, you're good with that? All right, fantastic. Thank you very much. And last but not least, discussion on budget capital plan, annual town meeting warrant articles. Any discussion on any of that tonight? Not hearing any.
Did the warrant get mailed out?
So it's supposed to go to the post office tomorrow. It's at the, it's at the mailing house right now.
Okay, so we're on track.
We're on track.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would bring it up now, but maybe it's, it's definitely not a conversation for this year, and I thought I had it with me, but I took it out of my work bag. But in Concord, again, they just switched this year to, instead of, no, not postcards, they're using their local newspaper, and their warrant is an insert in the paper.
Oh.
And they are, it's a pull-out insert, and their entire warrant is there. It's in the mailing that gets sent to the entire community, and saving a substantial amount of money versus printing the entire book to send to each community. I did have, I do have a copy of it, I will bring it next week to just to share.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see it.
It actually came out really nice. There was a lot of apprehension, a lot of community, you know, that would be something that we'd have to talk about, but as you were just talking about the warrant, it actually worked out quite well, so, just food.
It might have implications, too. I don't know the exact language of the charter, right? But I think part of the complication was that it's in the charter that we have to mail it out, and I don't know.
It's in the bylaw.
Oh, the bylaw, okay.
Yeah, so it's, so bylaw.
It is getting mailed, it's.
Well, yeah, of course. I just don't know what the language is, I just wanted to bring it up.
Does everyone get the paper?
There, I don't know if the ledger still does. They used to do townwide mailing once a month, I don't know that they still do.
They used to do it twice a year.
Twice a year.
Twice a year, okay.
But I don't know that they.
Is this the Concord Bridge?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the first year they've done it.
Yeah.
It just came out, and it actually did, so.
I like the postcard idea.
I don't know how other communities do it. Again, I hate to keep bringing it up, but if it's a money saver, and I know that this is one that gets brought up.
It came up as the Budget Task Force.
It did. It's the money, it's also the timeline.
Yes.
Right, having to get it to the printer, it's just, it, yeah.
So I've, I haven't been in a community where we mailed the warrant, but I've been in a community where we mailed something, right? And we switched, it was in an envelope, everybody threw it on the counter, and we switched to a postcard with a QR code, and then had like, where the warrant is available and how you can receive it, or how we can get it to you if you can't use a QR code. And there was certainly apprehension before the change happened, right? But once the change happened, the realization that folks actually, because it was a postcard, they were looking at it, right? And before, it was different.
We're saving a lot of trees.
Yeah.
Yes.
Instead of opening it and, yeah.
Trees, money, and time.
The booklet you're in, yeah, sorry, you said envelopes.
But, but I think a lot, like, what is this? I don't know what this is, some people get it, and it's a lot of money for the, for the 500 people, perhaps, that are actually, so like, 500 people that are actually reading it.
Got me to show up after I make here, but.
How many, how much money does it cost?
It costs, well, I don't have the final number yet, but a little over $7,000.
And that's twice a year.
Twice a year, so each, each time is seven grand.
Okay.
Yep.
But it's really also the time, the crunch time.
Yeah.
A postcard would be great, because then the QR code can be up, the website can be updated, right?
Yeah, so ongoing conversation.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't, that was, that was an action item.
I like the way they do it now.
I think it's perfect, actually. I really like that it, you know, artificially shrinks our timeline.
I like the fact that somebody has it, and it's there, determined, nobody can say, hey, I didn't get this, and what is this all about? I mean, people have to willingly not want to participate. Instead of saying, like other bodies in town, where it's like, I didn't get any notification, and you're like, how did this happen? And so.
Yeah.
I'm for notification to people.
I agree.
All right. Any other budget discussion? All right, minutes, warrants, action items, I believe the only ones that we're actually reviewing tonight are January 30th, 2024, is that correct?
Correct.
Action item is the only, I do have one.
Oh, we're still on minutes.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, we're still on minutes, I didn't know we started on minutes, okay.
Oh, we always start on minutes. Uh, January 30th, 2024, have we all reviewed this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's two, like Sarah Cameron's name is with an H.
Sarah with an H?
Oh, yes, Sarah, yeah.
And there was two things that I saw this morning, and now I didn't, I said, oh, I'll remember the one I get here. One of them is near the end. In. Uh, but, but, but let me just find it quickly. It was in the.
Is it statute instead of statue of?
No, 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 it wasn't, it wasn't a correction, it was the fact that it was talking about something that it didn't, wasn't clear what was being talked about.
I will just point out why we're looking at that. At the, on the first page, there's one instance where it says Member Jeffries instead of Chair Jeffries, it says Chair Jeffries everywhere else. It just needs to be fixed, just caught down.
Oh, I see.
Under public comment?
Yes.
Oh, so under current business, it said discussion on common Vittler's license compliance, and it says Chair Jeffries reported, the company has not come forward, but it doesn't say anything about what company it is that they're talking about.
Yeah. Want me to look at the agenda real quick? We can probably pull it up.
I'm going to look at that.
And under the next discussion item.
Okay.
You know, override is one word, and committee doesn't have three Ms in it.
Yeah, I can do that. Okay, so committee, two Ms, and then the override, oh, I see, the space here.
Yeah, there was some other place that something else was talked about in reference and didn't talk about. It wasn't clear what somebody was referring to, but it doesn't matter, those are the ones I came up with.
Okay.
I wonder if Michael Ray might remember well upon the transcript.
I can pull up the agenda real quick, it's going to take two seconds.
What are you looking for?
I'm going to look at the agenda from that meeting to see what the common Vic license was that we were discussing. Take two seconds. All right, let's go back to January, was it again, January 20th?
January 30th.
Third, no, 20th. Oh, 30th, yeah, you're right, sorry.
I couldn't get 2024 up earlier, but maybe it's been fixed.
I got it.
Okay.
All right, January 30th, select board meeting. Okay, let's see. Oh, it just says vaguely, discussion on common Vic license compliance, so I have no idea who that's even referring to.
Do you remember what this was about?
Yeah. No. All right, we'll just have to look that up.
I'll have to, let me, I'll pull up the minutes and see if it triggers a memory.
All right, let me find it. So discussion on common Vic license compliance, Chair Jeffries reported, the company has not come forward to submit a permit request, but has continued to operate. They are scheduled to appear before the board on the 13th. I remember this, I vaguely remember this, but I don't know who it's about. Well, let me go.
Was it?
Do you look in the folder?
What is, what is the date again?
2024, January.
January 30, 2024.
Oh, last year.
Well, I'm going to look at the 13th now, because it references that they're going to come before the board on the 13th, so let's go to what I'm assuming is February 13th.
We don't have January in our 2024 meetings.
Oh, I'm looking at the actual calendar.
This was, um, this is La Balena.
Oh, okay.
La Balena?
Yeah.
Probably.
Or whatever.
When they did, changed the reboot, maybe?
Yeah. Let me just confirm, so I'm going to look at February 13th, that's, that's probably right. Looking.
Can we also make a note?
I don't see it on the agenda. It says it was going to be on the agenda, but it's not.
She, they're busy. The January, I'm not crazy, the January folder's not there, right?
Or, do you think it's this?
Looks like a lot of meeting names aren't there.
Yeah.
Only eight there.
So it's.
Like, three months.
Yeah, because as I said, we gave La Balena until May.
Yeah.
We readressed it.
Okay.
July, it was.
So it's comrades.
So.
No September. Oh, there is a September.
Comrades.
And no December.
All right, so we figured it out.
Oopsy.
Okay.
Um, while we're still talking about this, this maybe should be action items, but in our drive, 2024, is missing a bunch of, I was going to look at that folder, it's missing four months. So when we did the migration from Google, it must not have all come over.
Okay.
Because I was going to look and see if there was something in the.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I just went to the calendar, I always never do that. But we figured it out, so. Any other changes to the minutes? All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes for January 30th, 2024?
So moved, second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, onto, well, actually, warrants, we're doing warrants. So we don't have the full, are you guys okay with not passing down that huge stack? Can we just pass over this top thing?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Okay. What do we have here? We have an accounts people warrant and the amount of $1,562,534.57.
So while we're doing this, I just.
Action item, oh, go ahead.
I think it's really, I don't know if it's action items or warrant comment, but I think it's really important. I know that with the change in pay, you know, that we don't, we're signing a lot of those digitally. But I do think it's, I think it's a lot of value in publicly stating, you know, the values that we're signing for payroll and other things. Maybe if we don't, if we continue to sign, maybe start mentioning what was signed at the tour meetings.
Yeah, that's actually, that's a really good point. Any other action items?
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no.
The, you know, we spent ARPA money, and we had all, lots of years of meetings about the flooding on Flat Hill. It would be interesting to get some report. Now that that drainage basin has been redone and inspected by our own people, our own engineer, what the condition is there? Has it affected it at all?
Okay.
I can tell you, at Stormwater Task Force, we asked Bill about it, he's gotten no calls, so that's a good sign.
That's a good sign, yeah.
Now, we've had some significant rains lately.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I mean, we've had some significant.
We can explicitly reach out to them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See if they'd want to even just.
Well, just, I mean, announcing it here, and there were people from that area that have come here many times, so it'd be interesting to see.
Yeah, for sure. All right, anything else?
Yep. Action item tracker, which we had started.
Yes.
But did that ever go anywhere, do we, are we using?
Yeah, it's, we have it. So we add to it.
And I see a file that says from 1980.
Oh, wait.
I don't know if anyone else sees that.
I don't know if it was ever added to SharePoint. We might not have had, we might not have it in SharePoint. We added it to the drive.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can move that over, thank you.
Just because I went to look, because I was like, I know I had some things, and then there is one in here, but it says it's from 1980, which is obviously, it's not, I don't know why that says that.
It's a little late.
Those are still ongoing.
Yeah.